There's a button that raises the podium up and down, so if you're taller, you can raise, push the button on your right. If you've got, to make it easier for you to speak, if you've got documents you want to submit, just give them to the clerk over here. And let's see, for remote speakers, just a reminder, please keep yourself muted and your cameras off until you speak. There is a Spanish language interpreter available, I believe, for this portion of the meeting, right there. Would you like to stand up and introduce yourself in English, español? Por favor. All right, and we're just about ready to hear from our public speakers. A reminder, during this period of time, we only, we allow one speaker per topic. It's not, it's not a public hearing, it's for a time for people to surface issues that are not on the agenda and might be new to the board, something that we want to be aware of. So if you've got multiple people here with you, that is absolutely fine, but you should have one speaker represent you, and then everybody else can stand or make a nice silent gesture to say that they are here to support you. But we do try, keep it to one speaker per topic, because we've got a big agenda we need to get through, and we have a lot of people waiting to speak. And I think, also, I should say, if you're here and you would like to actually really have a conversation with us, you are welcome to do that. We have Open Door Monday, every Monday in the month, the first four Mondays of the month. There's information available on the website, or you can talk to the gentleman out in the lobby if you would like to get more information, and then you can have actually a one-on-one conversation, which can often be a lot more satisfying for people. And of course, we've got emails, we talk on the phone, there were all kinds of different ways to meet, to meet with us. And I think that is it, and we will get going with the public speakers. And Mr. Krishna, would you like to call the first speaker?
Yes, of course, our first speaker is Kitty Clark Stevenson, followed by Shayla O'Ginn.
Good morning to you all.
Good morning.
I apologize for my voice.
You may need to turn on your microphone, I'm sorry.
Yep, we're gonna have you turn on the mic. Marguerite, can you help her with the mic? There's a button that you push and then a red, there you go, you're the first one, now it's odd, you're good to go, Ms. Stevens.
You couldn't hear me?
I could hear you, I could hear you, but, but there are millions at home listening, so, need the mic.
For you at home! Again, good morning to you all. I apologize for my voice, because I've had laryngitis for over a week. I'm here about the equal employment opportunity policy adopted by the Board in June of 1984. There are two sections of it that I'm particularly upset about. One happens to be the section on harassment. The other one happens to be about the responsibilities of managers and supervisors in Arlington County government. This one's my baby. I came on board on December 25th, 1983. I call myself Arlington County's Christmas present. I left it in August of 2000. I only plan to stay five years, so you owe me. The thing that I'm concerned about is that we've had managers and supervisors in every single department who did not meet their responsibility under this policy. Mark, you weren't here, I can't put any of this on your door, but from here on out, y'all gonna hear from me, because you've got to do better. Lived experiences in Arlington County, I grew up in this county under Jim Crow, so you can't tell me about the environment. I had to grow up in it. You have got to make sure, particularly in those departments with your chain of command, which you value so highly, which I respect, you can't put everything at one door. Not when you got bars and stripes, not when you take oaths to obey the law. Chief Stover told their union when they wanted to fight the EO policy in 1984, you swore to uphold the law. You didn't get to pick and choose which laws you wanted to uphold. Every sworn officer in here standing up, we were down there on Little Falls Road, y'all figure it out, more guns, more rattling, more handcuffs, but he looked them square in the eye, and he said, "You will uphold this law." Well, I could fuss forever. If you ever want to talk to him, give me a call.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Our next speaker is Shayla O'Ginn, followed by Marguerite Gooden.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Shayla O'Ginn, I'm 11th grade in Washington Liberty High School. I'm here to ask each of you to make a safe after-school community for Arlington teens a priority in 2025. It would be more important than ever for some of us next year. When I spoke here last spring, I talked about why middle and high school kids need an after-school, after-school opportu, I mean, community. Those reasons haven't changed. Isolation, anxiety, depression, bullying, drug use are still serious problems. I should know, I was bullied last year in school and physically hurt. I'm still dealing with the trauma. Now, on top of that, fear about government, immigration, actions is spreading through families and affecting kids. Some kids may lose parents, some are being warned, don't do anything that could mean contact with any law enforcement. We don't know what's safe and what's not. We worry about our parents, they worry about us, especially when they're working and we're out of school. The county and APS have added some new activities, and are calling them polite programs. Please take the step now, build a permanent, safe after-school community that provides support from adults who want to get to know us, a chance to make friends and things to know, do that are interesting and helpful. Help the kids to have a better opportunities. We are looking forward, and look, and we're looking to, to you to stand up for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Ginn. Thank you all for coming.
Our next speaker is Marguerite Gooden, followed by David Watley.
I only have two minutes, gotta go fast. Good morning. Chief Pavilis has consistently taken a proactive approach to addressing systematic disparities, ensuring that individuals from all racial, ethnic, and gender backgrounds have access to opportunities within the department. His efforts align with Arlington County's Affirmative Action Plan adopted by the Board in 1986, as well as prior politic, policies during, dating back to 1984 to 1995, Affirmative Action Plan, which emphasize workplace equity, workforce representation, and compliance with established guidelines. For decades, previous leadership within the fire department did not fully address these critical issues, leaving a legacy of noncompliance and missed opportunities for meaningful change. Since assuming his role approximately three and a half years ago, Chief Pavilis has tackled these challenges head-on, implementing initiatives that reflect a deep commitment to equity and inclusion. In response to the concerns raised by the union, Chief Pavilis has enacted numerous measures to address longstanding issues. These include expanding health and safety programs and establishing an Office of Professional Standards to independently investigate compliance with laws, regulations, policies, and agreements. These changes ensure adherence to equal employment opportunity policies that have been for, in place for over 40 years. We stand by Chief Pavilis.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gooden.
Our next speaker is David Watley, followed by Chris Freer.
Mr. Watley? Can you, can you unmute? You may need to unmute yourself, Mr. Watley.
Please.
Try again.
I am not seeing Mr. Watley in the room electronically.
Okay, well, let me, let us know when we get to the end, if he, if he, if he comes in, thank you. All right, we'll take our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Chris Freer, followed by Audrey Clement.
Mr. Freer?
Chris Freer. All right, moving on. Our next speaker is Audrey Clement, followed by Asim Rawut.
Welcome, members of the Board and the County Manager. I'm Audrey Clement from Westover. At a Q and A session hosted by Arlington County Civic Federation on December the 10th, County Manager Mark Schwartz projected an increase in tax revenue next year of 2% to 2.5%, based on, quote, "an 11% to 15% drop in commercial values this year," which will be repeated year over year for the next three or four years at least, end of quote. That coupled with increases in staff and salaries of 3% to 4% leaves a major spending gap, which must be funded by another tax rate increase, quote, "unless County Board is willing to cut county programs in a meaningful way," end of quote. Schwartz added, "The tax burden is a little bit higher than the rate of inflation, but not that much by 2% over the past five or six years. And I think there's been a conversation in the community that we simply tax our way out of these situations," end of quote. A more meaningful statistic is the difference between the six-year average annual effective real estate tax increase and the six-year average annual rate of inflation. At 4.8%, Arlington's six-year average annual effective real estate tax increase is 30% higher than the 3.7% six-year average annual rate of inflation. That's a lot, considering three years of high inflation. It's certainly not something to boast about. As for the community that wants to tax our way out of the funding gap, Schwartz must be referring to the gimme groups that seek handouts from County Board every budget cycle. It certainly isn't the average tax gouged residential taxpayer who has to pony up every year, nor is it the average apartment dweller whose taxes are extracted from their astronomical rent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clement.
Our next speaker is Asim Rawut, followed by Danny.
Good morning.
At last month's Board meeting regarding Arlington's Section 7 Trust Policy Amendments, Libby has solidified her legacy, essentially threatening the very communities she claims to care about. I'll read some quotes from her from that meeting. Quote, "Is this a time we want to draw attention and press on this issue here?" Quote, "You need to be clear-eyed about who your friends are and who your not-friends are." Quote, "I would like to not put this off, I would like to vote on this and get back to work, as if protecting vulnerable humans is not a priority." This last quote really struck me. Quote, "If we do these things, and you say you're safer, and you're not, is that a good thing? This patronizing, condescending attitude is the same thing we see from our ruling classes across the country. You don't know what's good for you, you can't govern yourselves, so we must bestow upon you order and civility." Here in Arlington, Libby tells us, tells Arlington's migrant communities what's good for them, because they can't possibly understand it themselves. Libby has essentially left the door open for Trump's fascist deportation programs. We see the same racist dynamic abroad. Barbaric, subhuman animals of the global South can't possibly govern themselves, they must be surveilled, bombed, dispossessed, overthrown. Libby has made sure that Arlington's economic prosperity is inextricably tied to America's imperial violence, whether it's at the border or in Palestine. I believe Martin Luther King's quote from a letter from a Birmingham person describes Libby pretty well. "The greatest stumbling block in the stride toward freedom is not the KKK, but the white moderate, who is more devoted to order than to justice, who paternalistically believes he can set the timetable for another man's freedom." It's along the lines of an unjust peace that Libby has solidified Arlington's place in the world. To put it another way, brunch will continue when Trump's deportation program hits Arlington. Brunch has certainly continued, as a genocide that Arlington funds and benefits from, continues and expands. Brunch will continue as poor and marginalized communities are displaced out of Arlington. Trump's regime of violence will come to Arlington, but apparently it's okay, because Libby and her friends will be able to eat brunch peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O.
Our next speaker is Danny, followed by Courtney Massey.
I don't know if I got the slides to you on time.
I'm sorry.
I have a couple slides, if I got them to you on time.
I do not know that I have them, but I can check with staff. If I get them, I'll put them up.
Yeah, I can get started, just real quick. Good morning, everyone. My name is Danny, and I'm with La Colectiva. I am here in solidarity with a lot of our community members, who many of you have met before, and some of the folks who are here. And this is just another reminder of what has been happening for decades here in Arlington County. In 2000, from 2000 to 2022, Arlington County has been one of the few across the whole country that has seen a decrease of migrants from Latin America. Meanwhile, there have been increases of white population, and this is just one of two counties with a population of 100,000 or more across the whole country. Even in the region, we have seen that other, the other cities nearby have had increases of our community, but Arlington County is the only one that has seen mass displacement of Latin American migrants for decades. Not coincidentally, Libby Garvey has been in office during that same time. Her record has also been one of supporting candidates who are backed by developers, or who are developers themselves, and also fueling mass displacement and gentrification along Columbia Pike. And we just want to be clear, that our community is aware, the role of politicians, the role of people in power, in maintaining these practices and policies that have been pushing our people out. And we recognize that we are going to continue to hold people accountable for all of their actions, and, you know, we expect better from elected officials moving forward. So thank you very much, have a good one.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Courtney Massey, followed by Joshua Handler.
There's a, there's a button on the right, you can push it, it'll, it'll raise the po, yeah, you're getting there. Ain't that better? Yeah, there you go.
Hello, I'm once again here representing the Northern Virginia chapter of Showing Up for Racial Justice. In 2019, this Board adopted an equity resolution that directs county departments to answer the following questions in their analysis: Who benefits? Who's burdened? Who is missing? And how do we know? In theory, these questions should prompt county officials to interrogate how their actions and policies can exacerbate racism at a systemic level. On her website, Chair Garvey writes that "As Board Chair, I will help make the answers to these four questions from our equity resolution part of our decision-making. Since this is her last public meeting, let's take a moment to reflect on her leadership in this area, particularly relating to racial equity." Under Garvey's leadership, who has benefited? Corporations like Amazon, developers, police, and ICE, rich white Arlingtonians who can shop and dine in gentrified neighborhoods without a care in the world. Under her leadership, who's been burdened? Immigrants living in fear of deportation, workers laboring under inhumane conditions, renters fearing and facing eviction or displacement. These populations are largely people of color. Their burden's no less heavy, and indeed growing heavier with what's on the horizon. And under her leadership, who's missing? For starters, the voices of those most impacted by the inequities that persist in Arlington. And how do we know? Because we've shown up to these Board meetings over and over again, and watched you treat your BIPOC constituents with disdain and indifference. You like to talk about your days attending civil rights and anti-war protests, but that, at this point, that feels like a performative line, prodded out for cred rather than actual proof of allyship. We've seen you repeatedly humiliate our friends who've simply been fighting for their communities. We've seen you brush off people who have stood at this podium in tears afraid to lose their housing. Your demeanor toward your most vulnerable constituents of color has been dismissive and demeaning, it's the antithesis of allyship. I don't need you to respond to this comment, your actions render your words meaningless. And to those of you who will still be here next year, there's still time to honestly answer those equity questions.
Thank you, Ms. Massey.
Our next speaker is Joshua Handler, followed by Elizabeth.
Yes, good morning. My name's Joshua Handler. On November 26th, I sent you an email thanking the Board for discussing the issue of public trust at the November 16th meeting in the context of the serious issues raised at the EHO trial. In the email, I indicated that Judge Schell's decision, based on the trial testimony, revealed someone on staff did not do something right during the development of the EHO policy. Judge Schell's October 25th written decision shows either housing staff ignored important information, had trouble overseeing the consultant's work, or coordinating with other elements of the county government, or worse, seemingly deliberately sought to keep information from the public not supportive of a missing middle housing program. The county's legal appeal likely will not change the facts from the trial that are now part of the public record, nor restore public trust. What is needed to restore public confidence in the objectivity and expertise of county housing staff is a thorough inquiry to determine what went wrong and why, with the staff's approach in the missing middle process, so corrective action can be taken. Housing staff is currently pursuing questionable plans like subsidizing developers, and the Housing Commission is exploring ideas for end runs around the judge's ruling according to press accounts. So I'm here today to ask if you plan to restore public trust, and look into the serious points raised in the EHO trial, or direct a manager to do so, and report back to Arlington's what you find. Please do not use the excuse of the appeal to avoid taking action or accountability. Waiting a year or two for an appeal to wend its way through the, through the judicial process will undermine the credibility of any new housing staff proposals, even the good ones, in the interim. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Handler.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth, followed by Blanca Aguilar.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth. I am here represent, as a representative of Nova Branch DSA this morning, and I'm here to speak about Arlington and the military-industrial complex. As we know, Arlington is a prosperous county, it's adorable, historical, and home to many defense contractors, which creates some tension. On the one hand, we enjoy the benefits of the money, but we cannot ignore the source of a great deal of it, and the incentives this creates. The Chair's remarks on how the community had to accept the shortcomings of the trust policy caused me to reflect on this, specifically how we had to be careful right now not to attract attention, and I have to ask, careful of what? Whose attention? For what? Military contractors, after all, cover a much broader portfolio than people might think, not just military, but ICE, and CPB, and surveillance tech, weapons of all kinds, to all buyers as authorized and permitted. And it would be nice to see a place like Arlington, that claims inclusivity, put a little more thought into what they want to be beholden to, and fight for that, instead of just defacing ourselves for the person holding the biggest bag. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Blanca Aguilar, followed by Esther Nunez.
Mi nombre es Blanca Aguilar Quiroz, y yo vengo a representar a mí misma y del bar croft que tengo las quejas. Yo estoy luchando por mi familia, que tengo dos niños, y vengo más que todo por el alquiler que tiene Bar Croft, que está subiendo cada vez más. Y vengo a exigir o a que den una solución que puedan bajar o estabilizar o congelar las, los alquileres de los apartamentos. Que ya me llegó una carta para mudarme, me están sacando el apartamento porque supuestamente se va a remodelar. Imagínense en qué situación estoy yo. No tengo trabajo, hay veces tengo que cuidar a los niños y todo eso. Entonces, por favor, si podían ayudar ustedes que son padres, madres también, y sé que hay muchas cosas, muchos problemas ustedes tuvieron también, se han encontrado en una situación como yo. Y también pediría que ustedes, como dijo la otra persona, que son la ley ustedes, que deberían hacer cumplir todas las quejas que venimos, que venimos aquí a la, a esta sala, a quejarnos. Por qué dejan, por qué permiten que vengan a quejarse todo el mundo aquí cada vez? Ustedes podrían decir, okay, si tienen este problema vamos a solucionar, pero hay palabras, palabras, si no hay hechos. No hay hechos, no, no hemos visto ningún hecho que están haciendo ustedes bien. Ustedes deberían ayudar a la gente, apoyar, porque mira, no apoyan ustedes a la gente, no va a haber esa confianza, como dice el caballero, no va a haber esa confianza con, con la gente. Y mira los problemas que está sucediendo en Nueva York, y todo eso de esa persona que mató a otra persona. No consigan esa violencia con la gente. Más bien, apoyen y consig, y acepten todas las quejas que vienen haciendo la gente. Ayúdenos para nosotros poder estar tranquilos y no hacer ningún problema, ninguna alteración, ninguna cosa mala hacia la gente también. Y así vivimos bien y tranquilo y en paz todo el mundo. Gracias.
My name is Blanca Aguilar, I am a resident of the Bar Croft Apartments. The reason that I'm here today is to ask for help, they are increasing the rents, and I can't pay my rent and take care of my children, I am a single mother. I recently received a letter that I was, need to leave the apartment because of the remodeling project. Also, there's a lot of people that have come to you here in this room, asking for help and letting you know the problems that they're having, and we hear a lot, but we do not see a lot of action. So I am here today asking you to please listen to the community and help us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next, excuse me, our next speaker is Esther Nunez, followed by Bobby Fisher.
Estoy aquí para hablar de la necesidad urgente de proteger a nuestros vecinos indocumentados. Ahora que sabemos que Arlington sigue firme, comprometido a mantener abierta la colaboración con ICE bajo la sección 7 de la policía, de la póliza de la confianza, con la nueva administración presidencial prometiendo deportaciones masivas, muchas familias en Arlington enfrentan un riesgo real de separación. Su voto del mes pasado ha significado que más familias podrían ser destruidas, con padres de familia arrancados del lado de sus hijos, y personas dejadas sin apoyo. Si esta junta realmente está del lado de nuestra comunidad, les pedimos que tome su... que Arlington está listo para apoyar a las familias afectadas, designar un punto de contacto o centro de recurso para conectar a familias en crisis relacionadas a deportaciones con asistencia inmediata. Estas son acciones realistas y urgentes que demostrarían su compromiso con la protección de todos los vecinos de Arlington. Cada deportación y cada familia separada aumenta el terror en nuestra comunidad. Es hora de actuar antes de que sea demasiado tarde. Gracias.
I am here to speak about the necessity to urgently protect our undocumented neighbors now that we know that Arlington continues firmly engaged in keeping the collaboration with ICE under section 7 of the trust policy. With the new presidential administration has promised massive deportation, many families in Arlington are facing a real risk of separation. Your vote last month means that families can be destroyed with parents, head of households taken away from their children and leaving their families without any type of support. If this board really is on the side of our community, we ask you to take concrete measurements that would help our community, such as to publish and distribute clear information in the website of the county with information about what to do if a loved one is detained or deported. Give clear announcement, public announcements in local social media, making sure that the Arlington community is ready to support those families that are affected. Designate a point of contact or a resource center to connect the families in crisis that are in relation with deportations with immediate assistance. These are realist actions and urgent that show your compromise with the protection of all the neighbors here in Arlington. Each deportation, each separated family rises the fear of our community. It is time to act before it is too late. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next and final speaker is Bobby Fischer.
I can't say good morning, but I will say my name again. My name is Bobby Fischer. The first speaker, Kitty Clark Stevenson. The third speaker, Margaret Goodman, Goodden, are black like me. We come before you, a white board that does not represent me, nor does it hear me, nor has it ever, ever. And I have been before this board more than five times. I was, I am discriminated in Arlington County. This is a racist community, and I hope the black officer does not arrest me for calling Arlington County, if not the entire Virginia, which is the birthplace of slavery, remains racist. I was arrested in the public library, and I warned Diane Kreis, the head of the public libraries in Arlington. I warned her fired. I am so angry I can't even sleep at night. More than 12 officers harassed me, handcuffed me because I complained about homeless people sleeping in the public libraries. I have rights, but you do not hear me. Tarkas, you will not be reappointed to the county board next year. Libby Garvey, you are resigning this month, and I'm glad to see that. Every black person that come here, and it's not many, have to come before our all-white board. And I include that of Mark Schwartz. I have this letter.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
This letter from the police department.
Yes, we've seen the letter. You've been here.
Well, officers.
Thank you. Thank you. If you could conclude your comments, you've been here many times. Thank you. I think that's our last speaker.
That is our final speaker.
All right. I think what I'm going to do is work backwards on the list, and there are groups of people here talking about very similar topics. I think I'll start with Ms. Fisher. If you want, we do have somebody in Caitlin Thomas right here could be in 311 to talk to you, but I know you've had many conversations. I know you're very upset about homeless people in the library and have been very upset about that. And we've had many contacts, and I've been to your home. So if you would like to talk to Ms. Thomas, she would be happy to talk to you. And then we had Esther coming and talking about wanting to have clear information, and I think our manager is prepared to talk about that a little bit now. I know we've been doing quite a bit. We very clearly are aware of the need for good information for our immigrant community. We did quite a lot back in 2016, and there are a lot of resources in this county for folks, and I'll ask the manager to talk.
Libby, can you pause? I think the translators are having.
Oh, I am so sorry. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm just talking. Let me know when you're ready. So just, okay. Yeah, I'll just start over a little bit, and I don't need to say all of it, sorry. We're very aware of the issues of concern. They're similar to the concerns we had back in 2016. There was a lot we did then. There are a lot of services available. We're working very hard to make it very clear. We've gone back and looked at things, and we do have, I believe the manager has some information for us. I think he was going to present this on Tuesday, but are you ready today?
Happy to talk about that today. We have, as of this morning, updated our website. We went back and looked at the material that we had posted eight years ago. If you type in "resources for immigrants" or you type in "immigration legal assistance organizations," both of those, it'll take you to our website. We're both in English and Spanish.
I wonder if our clerk could put that up, maybe. Are you able to put that up on the screen possibly?
Of course.
While the manager's talking? Yeah, go ahead.
There's a, not comprehensive, but a full and growing list of information available for everybody in our community.
All right. Thank you. I don't know if he's able to get that. So we are working very hard to get clear information up. There is information on the website. And this would be a good time to talk in general moving forward. There are many things, we're heading into difficult times. There are many things we can do, there are many things we cannot do. And it's very good that Voice is here in the room. Would everybody with Voice raise your hands? Because there are a lot of you here, right? Yeah. And the La Colectiva folks, if you would see the Voice folks. There are many things that Voice can do as private citizens that government really cannot. We have to follow the law. We simply do. And we are doing our best to provide good services. And I think we're heading into times where it's going to be residents here in the county of all sorts helping each other and supporting each other. Again, everything that we do is foible, which is good. It's transparent. It's open. But I think we're heading into issues where private citizens need to step up and help each other. I heard a lot about lack of trust in government. I understand that. That's kind of where we are right now. But I think what we need to realize is, moving forward, local government is going to be, in a way, the only government we've got. For a lot of issues, the federal government is not going to be there for us. And currently, the state government, if you watch what is being said out of the governor's office, they're not there for us either. We're it. So you may have lack of trust, you may have upset about what's happening, but we're what you've got. And I would like to invite a couple of people particularly made personal comments to me. That's fine. You don't know me. I would be very, very happy to sit down with people and talk to you in a room where we can get to know each other and talk to each other and talk about issues, not in a public forum like this where it can be published, recorded, and all kinds of things, and it's just hard to talk and get to know each other as people. But I would be very happy to sit down, because people are making assumptions about all kinds of people. And that's the problem today, isn't it? There's such assumptions about government, there's such assumptions about those people. Democrats do it about Republicans, Republicans do it about Democrats, and then I could go into all of the different divisions. We need to get to know each other. We need to build community. And coming to a meeting like this and casting accusations about things that you may or may not know of, I know it's from your perception, that's where it is. My perception is different, and the truth is probably somewhere in between. So I encourage you to have real conversations with board colleagues. I'm not going to be here, but again, I'm happy to meet with anyone who's been concerned about what I've been doing. Happy to meet with you and talk to you and learn, and I hope you would be willing to learn as well. Again, moving forward, this is it. Local government, that's your government, that's what you've got. It's us, and we need to work together. All right. So moving up, I'm going to move on up. This is, I'm so sorry, this is not a time for discussion, and we just have to carry on with our meeting, which is why I've invited people to, if you'd like, come and we'll have a conversation, and we can talk back and forth. But we don't do that here because we have a meeting to go through. I will go back up on Blanca Aguilar, concerned about the rent increase. Again, Caitlin Thomas will help you across the way. We've worked out with Barcroft. There are limits to how much Barcroft can raise the rent. They're working very hard to make sure. They promise that no one will be displaced. So if you're having issues, please go to room 311 after this, and Caitlin Thomas can meet with you or anyone else who's concerned about rent increases. We had Elizabeth come and talk. Again, I'm happy to just talk with you individually. Would somebody like, I'll stop right there and see if people would like to say something? Yes?
I was going to add on Barcroft that I know the moving units for the renovations is really highly disruptive, not where anyone wants to be, but there should be resources available to make that as smooth as possible. Your unit being renovated does not mean you are losing a unit at Barcroft. It means you'll be moved into a new one and continue to have housing. But if, for some reason, that is not what's being communicated, if that is not the information you've received, if you do not feel comfortable or feel like you're getting the support that has been promised to you, I really, really encourage you to reach out to us. Caitlin will be in 311 just outside to talk with you. We want to make sure, we put a lot of our money into this, we want to make sure that the residents you all here are getting what we have promised you, and if we're not, we do need to know about that so we can intervene and be as helpful as possible. So I just really encourage, if there is problems with the renovation process or people being moved around, please, please, please come, give us as much information as we can so we can support you.
Thank you. Did the translator get all of that? Were you able to? You got it? Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you. Want to make sure people understand. Mr. Carrington?
I will say it in Spanish so that translator doesn't have to work too much after that. It's not very far from what Ms. Coffey just said. Estuve ayer en Barcroft. Hemos tenido una conversación con la administración. No tenía una particular razón, simplemente visité. Y entendemos que hay problemas de colocación de gente, sobre todo el asunto de recibir una unidad de vivienda que es equiparable o funciona de la misma manera como la que se tiene que dejar. Los incrementos de la renta anuales están todavía limitados a 3% máximo y solo bajo condiciones. Si hay problemas con estas dos cosas, aquí estamos para verlos en particular. Las reglas globales de cómo tiene esto que funcionar, las tenemos bastante establecidas. Si hay algún tipo de infracción sobre esto, lo necesitamos saber ahora mismo, y aquí están la gente. Séntese libre a dejarlo saber, y lo vamos a tratar de solucionar de la mejor manera posible. Gracias.
Okay. Ms. Cunningham?
I just want to thank all of our speakers this morning, first of all, for making the room just a little bit warmer by being here, so thank you. And I particularly want to reflect on some of the lived experience that Ms. Clark Stevenson brought to us to remind us of the deep history and the long arc of history that we are still on in moving our community forward to live into our ideals and values. Mr. Handler's reminder and invitation to invest all of ourselves and all of our resources in rebuilding and sustaining trust in our local community. There's a lot that's going to be swirling nationally and has been swirling nationally. And as Ms. Garvey said, we need to be here wholly and fully at home, hearing each other, reaching out to one another, being with one another, and knowing that we are imperfect, but we are working to build a community that works for all of us. And as Danny and Ms. Aguilar highlighted, affordability and displacement is a constant concern in our community and many other communities across the nation, and that is a call, again, to all of us to listen, to invest, to reach out, to bolster one another. And as Ms. Clement noted, balancing our tax burden and the right mix of services for all of our residents is always tough, and these next couple of years, it is looking like it will be even tougher, both because the service needs will increase and because, as long expected, the office revenues and office building valuations have begun to show the strain that they've been under. So I just want to kind of tie all that together, because all of that and all of your voices here today reflect the richness of our community and the diversity of our lived experience and the difference in needs that each of us are facing and pressures we're facing. So as a community with such diverse needs, I really think 2025 is inviting us very loudly to listen to one another, really quite deeply and humbly, and to make sure that we're challenging ourselves and our own actions as well as our government and our corporate actions to make sure our budget and our services really reflect who we mean to be as a community.
Thank you. Mr. DiFranti?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thanks for the thoughtful remarks, Ms. Cunningham, on civility as well as, Madam Chair, with respect to listening. Ms. Massey, are you still here?
Yeah.
Okay. So I do take the charge of thinking about the equity resolution seriously, and I hear your frustration. I won't label. It's not up to me to have a grand statement as to how best to be judged as to whether I can be a good ally or others. I will say my lived experience on the board has been that Chair Garvey, she may say things differently, and we are all imperfect. I am imperfect, but I can't not say that the level of frustration that you shared is not my experience, and the voting and actions of Chair Garvey are not consistent with what I listened to. So I have to say that. That may not be smart for me to say. That may not be smart for me to say, but I'm saying it. I do have one other thing before sending it back to you, and I appreciate you taking the high road. Madam Chair, Mr. Ruwut Asim Asan, I see you. I heard your comments. I'll just have three thoughts, four thoughts. First, I'll take another risk. I would not be on this board if the choice were up to Chair Garvey. She supported my competitor. That was a hard way to start. But we have built a civil relationship. I don't agree with her on everything, and she doesn't agree with me on everything. But I struggle with the level of questioning of motive. If we go after each other's motives first, then it's hard to do much together. So that's just a thought with respect to your comments. Again, just like my prior comments, I'm not going to—it's not for me to judge whether I'm a good public servant and ally, as you described. I will say some—one, three thoughts in addition. Ms. Garvey does not—I aligning her with President-elect Trump is just not accurate. If you know who she is, she does not agree with him on most anything. She probably might not love me to say that, because she—we want to protect Arlington. Secondly, this past week, Governor Youngkin took steps that are exactly some of the concerns that Ms. Chair Garvey mentioned. You might not agree with her strategy, but protecting our most vulnerable is part of who our chair is, and that Governor Youngkin's statement earlier this week is evidence. We can disagree, and your quote about standing up and Dr. King is omnipresent on my mind. Part of doing that this morning, for me, is sharing that we might disagree, but the level of—it's just not my lived experience, and I—Chair Garvey is a public servant, and she has been focused on serving the public for her entire career. I don't agree with her on everything, but I just happen to say that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. DiFranti, for the kind words. I appreciate—I do appreciate that. And again, I think you're hitting on the point of motives, questioning each other's motives. You know, again, I think we need private conversations, one-on-one or in small groups, to really get to know each other, and we'll understand our motives a little bit better. And again, I think, again, local government is what you've got. This is it, and we need to learn to get along, because this is it. It's us. We got to do this, because otherwise, we're in a really bad way. I wanted to—Mr. Handler talked about trust, a whole different kind of trust. Josh, are you here still? You know, yeah, we can talk to—you know, we can talk about transparency, and we just are going to have probably a different—I would have to, you know, agree to disagree on some of this somehow. Eighteen months of a preparatory process, and there's—everything's online. In fact, we're—I invite anybody who's concerned about the EHO to look online. There's pages and pages and pages of information, and we are appealing the judge's ruling, because we don't agree that it is correct. Then I will go—we've covered most of the other speakers. Ms. Clement, again, as Ms. Cunningham mentioned, you know, we have really highlighting the spending gap we've got, which is going to be large. It's going to be a difficult budget year coming up. And moving back up to—we really haven't—I haven't addressed, and I did really want to talk about what Ms. Kitty Clark Stevenson and Marguerite Gooden came to talk about. Do I think—Mr. Karen Thomas, did you have something you wanted to say? I don't want to—okay, we're good. Mr. DiFranti, go ahead.
I don't know the order, but I do have a few pretty specific thoughts on the voice speaker.
Okay, go ahead. All right. Let's—we—why don't we do—because I'd like to take Ms. Gooden and Ms. Stevenson last, if that's all right, dear friends. Thank you. Be patient. I'll get to you. All right. Mr. DiFranti, go ahead, and then Mr. Karen Thomas, go ahead on voice.
And thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I will be succinct and leave space where a lot of us care about this. So on Wednesday, I had a meeting about this. There are four charges in my last meeting with the voice that you specifically asked me about. One is to name the program. Another is the scope of the position that we are hiring that works on the program related to after-school. A third is to get the funding or score with—the amount of money that is there with respect to the one-time funding and ongoing funding that we adopted in our last budget. And then the last is to speak, as you mentioned in your letter in January. I followed up on each, but I have not finished that work. I would ask that—and I think this—I don't know if this aligns with the date that I shared in the last meeting. This is very important to all of us, and it's particularly important to me, having started my career as a teacher. So that doesn't per se mean that I am going to care, but I'm—those four things, I followed up on Wednesday. Yesterday, I met with a parent who's of a child at Kenmore who was—who suffered from bullying, and so this is a huge concern. We are working on it, and those four areas. I would ask you, by Friday, January 10th, if you have not heard from me, then follow up with an email, and I'll be happy to talk with you and seek to be accountable on this issue. Prior to that, on January 6th, you will be hearing me talk about this in my opening remarks. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Karen Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I align, first of all, I align myself with Ms. Cunningham's and Mr. DiFranti's remarks on what is actually the motives that we know that you have in all this. And these are motives that are definitely protective of this community, especially the most vulnerable ones, which become now more and more vulnerable since we are actually facing an incoming administration with, A, uncertain, and B, obviously hostile intentions. So the ways we organize as a community have to be multifaceted and multilayered in order to be effective. There will be harm. We know that. We have been going through this. We have already experienced with that, right? In reality, we're just dusting off policies and first reactions that we had in the past. The community is also organizing, though, and that—the job of our government is to be supportive to our community and protective of it. So this we are doing. The second thing is, I wanted to go back for a moment to the—what we heard about the Ms. Aguil—Ms. Olgin, Shayla, who spoke about the after-school programs. I have to tell you that, under the current circumstances, I discovered yet a new layer, a new dimension of these programs. So this is exactly the type of conversation we have here. This is a community investment that needs to come to fruition right now. We put down the money. We put down the intentions. I do think that the Department of Parks and Rec on our side has done enormous, you know, strides forward. We are talking with our colleagues in the school—on the schools, on the APS side almost daily. I had yesterday good conversations with both incoming board members of the school board, and they are quite committed to get this going. So we will be sitting with you to discuss that more in detail and what exactly—what programs we can implement as soon as, you know, humanly possible. So we recognize the importance of that, especially in times like that. And I will leave the discussion about—
Thank you. Yes, we'll get there. Thank you. And I do want to see if our manager would like—Ms. Agui—we have done a lot with school programs, and I don't know if the manager would like to talk a little bit about it, because it sounds like we haven't. We've actually done quite a—
I would. Keeping in mind what we just heard, which is that there's more to be done, and you'll hear more about that in January from board members and also from me and my proposed budget in February. Since people are listening, I did want to talk about what we've done with multiple departments and really with the schools. We've spent a lot of time looking at at-risk youth and Tier 2 and Tier 3 categories, working with families. But I wanted to be specific, because sometimes people don't know about the things that we've done. Doesn't mean we've done everything we need to do. We have a new three-time-per-week after-school program at Kenmore Middle School, in addition to our three existing programs at Thomas Jefferson, Gunston, and Arlington Mill. We have a new one-time-per-week program at Wakefield that's going to kick off formally in January. We've expanded our college trip program. We've had a large uptake on that, where students get the opportunity to go out with some school personnel out to college campuses to see what's going on, see the opportunities there. We have fully staffed our DHS, Department of Human Services Behavioral Healthcare Counselor units at all our high schools, which has never—not always been the case. We have a really strong ACES, which is the Adverse Childhood Experiences Campaign going on through the Department of Human Services. We've spent a lot of time sharpening our job search skills that we're working with teens. We have specialized family support for new families for—that Arlington Public Schools has been working on—for new families coming into the country. We've augmented the JDR, which is our Juvenile and Domestic Relations Program, Girls Outreach Program, and the Rise Mentor Program. And we have—I'm really proud of what my office has done. We've completely revamped and rebranded our website to Arlington Teens dot com. And we have a lot of our communication staff that have gone into high schools, and I will admit, they are bribing them with sugar and candy on occasion to get them to pay attention, and I apologize for that. But take a look at the website, ArlingtonTeens dot com, and we're going to be embarking on our youth strategic plan starting in 2025.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. And part of the issue that we have is getting the information out. I mean, if you hear we start rattling off lists and lists, and you just kind of get—you might glaze over, which is part of the problem. That's why we have webpages and we have people. But in this room now, we've got La Collectiva who's interested in this. We've got Voice. You talk to a lot of people. Please help get the word out for us. There's a lot out there that's not being taken advantage of, and we are working really hard. Please help us. Please help us, because we need—it—we can't do it all. Government cannot do it all. And again, I will just say again, the fact that La Collectiva is here and Voice, you all together can do things to help each other that we cannot. We're moving into a very difficult time. There are real limits on what we can do or what we can do in a way that will be beneficial and not put at risk some vulnerable populations, because we have to follow the law, and we're totally transparent. All of our emails are available. You know, anybody can ask for them anytime, who we're talking to, about what, when. That's what we have to do. And it's good. Clear government. But some of the issues coming up, we need people who can help each other, that somebody is not likely to FOIA and ask who you're talking to and what you're talking to them about. All right? So we're all in this together. Everybody's got a role. Voice needs to be playing a different role than it has in the past, I will say to you all. You come and tell us what we need to do, and we've been doing a lot. But now we're to a point where Voice needs to be doing some things. Really. Okay? So we're at some tough times, because the folks coming here, representative like La Collectiva, they're heading into difficult times. And again, we're going to do as much as we can here, but we will obey the law. We will follow the law. We always do. There are other things that need to happen that government cannot do, and that's up to the community, everybody here in this room. So I hope you will reach out to each other and help each other. Let us know how we can be helpful. But again, there are things we can do, and there are things we cannot do. And we're going to work very hard to keep everybody in this community feeling as safe and secure as we can. So thank you. And now, we've gone on quite a long time. I do want to talk, because I was aware—I know Marguerite Gooden particularly, and your group, and Ms. Stevenson, and thank you so much for coming to our group, Ms. Cooper. Thank you. Everybody—you all have really supported our fire chief. Thank you so much. She's really been having a hard time. And so I do have—I sort of have a statement that I'd like to read a little bit, so I'll kind of read at you, but not too much, and it's not too long, because there've been articles in the local press, and we just want to assure—the board wants to assure the residents of Arlington County that you may be hearing about their staffing shortages, their concerns, but the Fire Department continues to provide some of the best public safety service in this country, and it continues to be shown—you can see it in response times, you can see it in the skilled EMS treatments that have saved lives that in other communities would not be saved. We're very grateful for the professional expertise and hard work of our EMS and firefighters every day, and we thank the families of the department, because the firefighters have needed to work overtime, and they are struggling with staffing issues. They're being felt in just about every other department, fire department in the region. This is not unusual to hear. So folks are working really hard. Want to assure everybody that you are very well-served by our Fire Department. Also want the residents to know that we fully support Chief Pavlitz, as he works to bring the department up to full staffing levels and to change a culture that Ms. Stevenson talked about so eloquently. He is working to change a culture that's long been there. It's included sexual harassment and bullying long before Chief Pavlitz arrived. The board recognizes and wants our public to recognize that changing a culture is not easy. Culture of the Fire Department—also want to remind people—is created by the firefighter union members themselves. It's within the department. It's the firefighters themselves, who are far better able to detect and prevent bullying and harassment inside various fire stations and departments than is any single fire chief. And we had a recent outside report done, because we were concerned about what was going on, and that, and investigators found that Chief Pavlitz has dealt quickly with every problem that has come to his attention. So the board is not surprised—public shouldn't be surprised—that there's some resistance among firefighters to make the kinds of changes that are needed to be made to improve the culture of that department and to increase the staffing in that department. We are still disappointed and frustrated by it. A changed culture and improved staffing would benefit the entire department and their families, and the union needs to step up and make that happen. Chief Pavlitz is tackling some of the toughest issues a leader can face, and at the same time, he's ensuring that our residents receive excellent fire and EMS services. He has our full support. And thank you again, Ms. Gooden, Ms. Stevenson, and Ms. Cooper for coming. Thank you so much. All right. I think—thank you. Bless you. All right. I think we are ready to move on with that. If you want to stay for the rest of our exciting meeting, you're welcome to do that. Otherwise, go for it. Stay warm and build community. Thank you so very much. All right. I think that brings us to our consent agenda, if I'm correct. We'll move to that. Mr. Kushner, have any items been pulled from the consent agenda?
There have. There are three items pulled. Give me just a moment. I'll display them.
And those are items 3, 7, and—
Items 3, 7, and 8. So item 3 is the use permit review for the American Legion Post, number 139. Item number 7 is the use permit review for live entertainment at Snouts &amp; Stouts.
Okay.
And item number 8 is use permit review for a private school at Tindale Christian School.
Excellent. I'm going to just go ahead and move the consent items minus item 3, 7, and 8, and my colleagues have all left, and now I can't vote on it. Thank you. All right. We'll take a pause. We'll take a pause here. All right. You could talk to the clerk if you'd like to.
No. Se que me escuchan. Yo solo quiero agradecerles a lo que he escuchado, lo que hablaron. Está muy bien lo que hablaron ustedes. Están apoyando, las respuestas que he escuchado ustedes están muy bien. Es lo que quiero escuchar, la gente.
Okay.
Dame un segundito para traducir.
No entiendo español. Piquito, piquito.
She's saying that she appreciates the comments, and this is what people wanted to hear, et cetera, and she thanks us for the conversation that we had on the task.
Thank you. And do—if you've got issues, do see—you know, with rent and things, do see Ms. Thomas, because she will help.
Y que conecten con la señora Thomas, que le vamos a enseñar quién es Kaitlin Thomas, para hablar un poco de los problemas con el alquiler y la relocation, el cambio de la vivienda.
Muchas gracias, y les agradezco a todos que tengan un buen día y buen trabajo.
Muchas gracias a usted.
Bajando así van a ganar.
Okay. Gracias. Thank you. All right. So we wait for Mr. DiFranti. You know, I've been doing this a long time. I've never had this happen, where I come to the consent agenda vote, and the whole board disappears.
Yeah, all of a sudden—
It was quite cold and—
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I have—I have a wrap in my office that I am about to go get. Yes.
Do you want to just go over the—
Excuse me?
—highlights of the consent agenda? You can just go over the highlights, maybe.
Excuse me?
You can go over the highlights of the consent agenda.
Oh, what a good idea. Let's go to the highlights. Let's do that. All right. Thank you. We're about to vote on the consent agenda, and I want to go over just a few things, just kind of for the record, because actually, the consent agenda we do is—it's consent agenda, because it's not controversial, but there actually are some pretty cool things and interesting, and I always try to highlight those. So I'm going to do—I'm going to do the highlights first, and then I'll come back. So the first thing I think we wanted to cover was item 13, which was establishing new fees for electric—county electric charging stations. There we go. And we are—we've been putting in some fees—excuse me—some of the charging stations around the county, which is great. stations around the county, which is great, including in my own Fairlington where I live, and I now have a vehicle that needs to get charged, and it's wonderful to have it there, except every now and then they're all full. And to that point, actually, we're going to have a dwell fee, which you can see in the second bullet here, so that if you, if you, you're great to charge up your vehicle, but once you've done that, you can't just let it sit there for hours, you need to move it so others can charge it. And we're going to have also authorize the manager to go ahead and update the fees as needed, if, if power rates and things like that go, go up. We're not trying to make big bucks, we're just trying to meet, meet our costs. And these changes will go into effect January 1st, 2025. And we currently, God, I don't know if that's in here, we've got 31 public charging stations, 43 different ports available for use, and I think ChargePoint, I think everywhere it's ChargePoint, and there's a little app you can get on your phone. Anyway, it's, it's, it's pretty cool, we are starting to really go electric. We also did a memorandum of understanding between Arlington County and the Arlington County Fair Board. The fair is such an Arlington tradition, it's been going on for a really long time, it's been run by volunteers, and as you can see here in, in 2014, it was pretty big, with 50,000, and then 160,000 this year. It's getting to be way more than volunteers can actually handle, and everybody loves the fairs, so we've got to keep the fair. So, we are going to have an agreement with the fair board, and we're going to handle fair operations, which will include vendor management, permits, logistics, and marketing. And the fair board is going to work on programming, volunteer recruitment, and, which they do a great job on, and advisory functions. We're also going to fund and provide essential resources, because, which we usually do, like the shuttle services and, you know, emergency support if we need it, and that will be offset in part by some other revenues, and we're really looking forward to another great, great fair and a, and a great future for the fair. Then we also did a multi-year funding agreement for the art operations and maintenance facility, which is brand-new and just opened, and I wanted to highlight that today, just to go over the opening, the ribbon cutting. Can we maybe move this slide? Because we just, we just had this opening. So it's a beautiful building in Fairlington, it just opened. It, this all, there were a lot of different funds, and we've just had a grant agreement with, with our vote today between the county and the Virginia Department of Air and Public Transportation, and we're using 12.3 million in Commonwealth Transportation Funds for remaining construction costs with doing it. It does require a 50-50 match, so we do have to match it, so the total cost is 24.6 million. And we approved this in July of 2018, and we purchased the parcels on Fairlington Road in Green Valley, we worked with the neighbors. Can you get to the next picture? Because I think there's, there we go. We had a great ribbon cutting, we had all kinds of people here from the state and the area, got to tour the facility. I want to thank everybody for this, for the work involved. We're all freezing here, they have a heated floor, maybe the next meeting, you guys, I may not be, you might want to hold it in this facility, because I think it'll be warmer. And this is where we're going to have preventive, regular preventive bus maintenance. One of the things that I'll, it sort of wasn't, it was a sort of a side comment, this is to keep the buses, we've been repairing them at another facility in Fairfax, I think, and the buses have to get on 395 and go down the highway. Well, the buses that get on the highway to go down there are the ones that need repair. So sometimes they break down on the way getting to the repair facility, which just isn't, doesn't make too much sense. So it's great to have it here, want to thank all the staff involved and the neighborhood, because the neighborhood worked really hard, hard with us, I think it's just a, a great thing.
And Chair?
Yes, Mr. DiFranti.
We've had a, a lot of public comment, it's good. I just want to call attention and mock my facial expression in that, I think that we got a couple, Mr. Karantonis, I think, I love yours too.
I have an even worse one.
Oh, I have to really look at this.
Madam Chair, you look so happy, and I look like, you know, crazy, but I just thought it was important.
I think, I think, I'm thinking I look happy at every ribbon cutting and opening. This coffee actually has a picture of me.
A delightful picture.
A full picture of me.
On my wall, from one of our earlier ribbon cuttings, in which I have never seen a bigger smile and just joy to be, to be breaking ground on, on a new project.
It's really cool.
But it's, it's on my wall, and it reminds me of the joy of the work that we do.
Yes, well, as you may have noticed, sometimes it's not so easy, and it's not so fun, but these are just the really high points, it's just great.
I would say that perhaps we should ask for a training from you on how to get a good facial expression at a ribbon cutting, because every one that I have been a part of, I think I, I certainly look a lot more like Mr. DiFranti than Ms. Garvey.
Like, what am I looking at?
All right, we could do some training in January, we'll do that.
I think that I'm irredeemable in this sense, but nevertheless, it was an excellent opportunity to take into commission our newest bus dentistry.
Yes, yes, I call, yeah, so I've, I've been saying it looks like big dentist chairs. This picture doesn't show it, but there are these, things, tools hanging down, they look like dental equipment for like a monster. It's really, it's really cool. Anyway, I, this is great, and it's, and it's a fun thing, it's a good thing that we do.
And I should also say that employees of our, our bus drivers, the bus drivers of 45 and 41, recognized me these days and said, "That was fun there."
Oh, good, that's good, that's good. And actually, and I, we're just really totally riffing right now, I thought your comments, Mr. Karantonis, were really good about how buses build community, because you get on the bus, and you're with all the different people in your neighborhood, all kinds of people you wouldn't otherwise see, and you take a bus ride together, and I think that's just one of the side benefits of transit, that I hadn't ever really focused on, and I think that was an excellent point you made. All right, moving on, one, another thing, which is just great, wanted to just highlight the Cummings Foundation. They have been graced, this is, we just accepted a fourth donation of services from them, 250,000, and they are used to, to provide services and resources for the wellness of our Arlington County Public Safety Agencies. Our public safety folks are great, they work very stressful jobs, and since 2021, the Cummings Foundation has partnered with the Police Department, and part of what it is to pride these services, but also to do research on occupational stressors and develop a holistic wellness model for our first responders that may go nationwide and, and help first responders everywhere. These are not, these are not easy jobs. And I think I will also say, yeah, it's on the, on the, on the screen here, you can all read, but given the positive results to date, the foundation has asked to provide another donation to continue its research another 12 months, and we're just, we're just delighted with their, with their support. And then finally, we accepted, one of the fun things we do with these consent items is money. We accepted a five-year, $1 million grant awarded by the Bureau of Justice Assistance to support the Commonwealth Attorney's Development and expansion of the Offender Aid and Restoration Diversion Program. And OAR is a great organization, and it helps reentry for folks that have been incarcerated, and helps, helps them get, get on their feet in the community. All too often, people are incarcerated in a lot of places, and they, when they're finished, they're, they're sent out, and they don't really have a place to go, a place to be, a job, and it's so, 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 so hard for folks, and the OAR and this diversion program helps, helps get them on their feet, which is great. All right, with that, I, oh no, now we have to vote. Y'all, we forgot. All right, yeah, yeah. So, I will just move that we adopt the consent agenda with removing items three, seven, and eight. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, multiple seconds, pick.
Ms. Cunningham.
Yeah, Ms. Cunningham, all right, she's got it, she's got it. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, 5-0, thank you very much, and I think that brings us to our first regular hearing item, and I'll turn it over to the manager, and I'm going to get something, a wrap, to stay warmer. I'll be right back.
So that'll be item?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, wait, we're going to turn it over to the clerk.
Just to call the item, which is item number 25, Gateway Park Master Plan and Design Guidelines.
So, thank you. With me, with me in person today is Max Ewer, Jeremy Smith, and Eric Beach from the Department of Parks and Recreation, and we have additional staff available online, so I'm going to turn it over to Max to go through all the slides, over to you.
All right, good morning, county board members. My name is Max Ewer. I'm an associate planner with the Department of Parks and Recreation, and I'm joined on the dais today by my colleagues Jeremy Smith, landscape architect, Eric Beach, Park Development Division Chief, and online by our DES colleagues as well. Before I get into the presentation, I want to extend thanks to colleagues in DES, CPHD, and AED, partners at the Roslyn Bid, and all the stakeholder groups who were part of this process, especially the community members who took part in the engagement. We are seeking approval for item number 25 on the agenda, the Gateway Park Master Plan and Design Guidelines. In this presentation, we will go through a quick background on the project, the engagement process, the park master plan, the design guidelines, and then getting into next steps. Gateway Park is a 3.7 acre park constructed in 1986 as part of the construction for I-66. The park existed without formal agreement between VDOT and the county until 2021, when a land use agreement was signed. Gateway Park was identified in the Roslyn Sector Plan as a plan to be redesigned with a new park master plan. The engagement of the park master plan took place over three phases. Throughout the engagement, we heard from over 1,600 participants, including two in-person open houses, three online forums, pop-up events, and targeted engagements with students at H.B. Woodland and the Arlington Mill Community Center teen drop-in days. For the first engagement, we asked community members high-level visioning questions. How do you get to the park? How long do you stay when you're there? What do you do? What do you love? And what would you like to see transformed? The respondents were clear, for Gateway Park to be successful, it needed to lose some of the concrete, add nature, be connected, and serve the needs of both the growing human and dog population of Roslyn. We took the responses from that first engagement and used them to develop three distinct conceptual designs, the Potomac Stitch, the Roslyn Ramble, and the Gateway Commons. Each of these concepts varied in terms of amenities, more active ones in the Potomac Stitch to a focus on special events in the Gateway Commons, and they also varied in terms of treatment of the pedestrian bridge. The Potomac Stitch removed the pedestrian bridge entirely, the Roslyn Ramble adapted the existing bridge, and the Gateway Commons had an entirely new one. What we heard from the community is that their preferred amenities were the woodland walk, the dog run, garden rooms, the canopy walk, and the flexible lawn. Of the respondents who identified a preference with the pedestrian bridge, the vast majority indicated that they wanted one rather than the complete removal. The final engagement took all of the preferred amenities from the second engagement, and rather than picking the preferred concept, develop a fourth draft concept that had the best of all of them. The final draft concept included a new pedestrian bridge, large and small dog areas, garden walks with rooms that could be used for flexible programming, playgrounds for children age 2 to 5 and 5 to 12, social groves, restrooms and storage, and an event pavilion and flexible lawn area that can serve both special events and everyday use. We heard from the community that 59% of respondents indicated that they were satisfied with this proposal. The engagement period clarified that the community wanted a park that celebrates nature, supports community events, and is safe and connected to the surrounding area. The final design for the park master plan included several changes from the final engagement. First, on the western side of the park, we heard that the areas along the garden walk seemed too enclosed and felt unsafe. We took the total number of these social spaces from five to three, making them slightly larger, adding multiple entrances, and surrounding them with a planting pallet that allows for parkgoers to see in and out, and feel safe walking through the park. Additionally, we heard from the community and the pedestrian advisory committee that the proposed pedestrian bridge was too meandering, and that a more direct route would be preferred. To address this concern, we added a staircase in the park's northwestern corner of the eastern side. Looking closer at the amenities in the park, we start on the western side. The proposed dog park includes space for large and small dogs, and includes areas to sit, water and dog waste stations, and forest islands inaccessible to the dogs, while still providing a sense of nature and shade within these areas. The social spaces on the western side, on the western end, are designed to be flexible in nature. Performance, art, a space to work, relax, workout, or play table tennis with friends are all options, and they could even change over time. As we get into the design development stage of the project, we will continue to work with the community to figure out the most appropriate use of these spaces. Continuing east, we reached the pedestrian bridge. The core team worked closely with our DES colleagues and VDOT to ensure that the proposal met the necessary standards for distance from traffic lights and the necessary clear zone to allow through traffic. The existing pedestrian bridge functioned as a wall rather than a porous gateway to Virginia from Georgetown. The playgrounds on the eastern side of the park would serve children age 2 to 5 and 5 to 12, with a variety of nature-inspired play equipment. The playgrounds are located near the flexible lawn area, so that parents attending a special event can stay close to their children while still enjoying the festivities. The flexible lawn area and pavilion serve both special events and everyday use. Parkgoers could lay down a blanket and have a picnic, or set up an impromptu game of volleyball or spikeball on the lawn. Additionally, we have included a restroom close to the playground and storage area onsite. And here is a view of what a future Jazz Fest could look like at the park, supporting more visitors than what currently exists today. For the design guidelines, we wanted to highlight a couple of the finer details of the park as we get into the design development phase of the project. The proposed tree canopy would raise coverage from 10% to 46% over the recommendation of the Forestry and Natural Resources Plan, and would even try and preserve two large mature trees in the northeastern corner of the park. To support those trees, we are proposing a minimum of four-foot-deep layer of soil, and will continue to work with our DPR foresters to ensure the long-term health of the trees in the park. Throughout the engagement, one of the most consistent concerns we heard from the community was that the area surrounding the park is not safe for pedestrians. To address these concerns, we have proposed maintaining the pedestrian bridges over westbound Langston Boulevard and North Fort Meyer Drive. Additionally, we will continue to work with our DES colleagues and VDOT to make the area surrounding the park as safe as possible. Some of these nearby projects include streetscape improvements from the adjacent developments, Vision Zero initiatives, and improvements to come from the Corps of Roslyn Transportation Study, and have either already begun or will begin in the future. A diversity of custom-made and prefab furniture would also be included throughout the site, though, again, the exact details of these would be determined during the design development phase of the project. And lastly, we have the proposed lighting throughout the park. County standard lights would frame the perimeter of the park, while pedestrian scale lights and strategically placed area lights would line the primary pathways. Additionally, bollard lights would guide people through the garden walk, while linear lights would line the pedestrian bridge. The varying lights would serve to make the park feel safe and navigable at night. As far as next steps go, if the board approves the park master plan, the project will continue into the design development phase. During that phase, we would refine the elements of the park's conceptual design, finalizing the details of the site furnishing, the initial uses of the social spaces, the planting pallet, public art, and more. To accomplish this, we would work closely with county staff in DPR, DES, CPHD, and AED, as well as VDOT and other stakeholders in the community. At this point, we are planning to have two engagement opportunities during the design development phase, and we hope that those who have been involved continue to do so. In closing, the county manager recommends that the county board adopt the Gateway Park Master Plan and Design Guidelines. Thank you, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This looks great. Now we'll go on to, I think, our applicant. We have, do we have someone here to present from? Do we have someone here to present?
Yeah.
We don't. Okay, because I have, I have this here, and it's, it's part of my script, and I'm wondering...
I do believe we have Mr. Justin Jackson with Fields on the line. I'm unsure if he's making a presentation, or if he's just available for questions.
Okay, all right. Mr. Jackson, would you like to, do you have a presentation, or are you just here for questions?
No. Mr. Jackson's just here to answer questions if there are any further, the in-depth on the design. We, as DPR staff, are happy to answer.
Thank you. No, no, that's just, that's just fine, I'm just kind of following my script here. So, it's okay. And that gets us to advisory groups. I think we have, is Mr. Schinners going to present? Come on up, come on up, if you have anything, or do you not want to, do you have anything to say?
Only that Gateway Project did a fantastic job.
Done a fantastic job. Okay, I won't make you come to, to the microphone to say that. All right, colleagues, why don't we go ahead and have a motion and then have discussion if that is...
I believe we do have one public speaker.
Oh, we do have a public speaker. Like, I call all the speakers who aren't here, and I forget the one who is. I'm sorry. Please call the public speaker.
Of course, our first public comment speaker is Mr. John Kelly, speaking for three minutes.
Okay, Mr. Kelly, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Great. Good morning. My name is John Kelly. I'm a 17-year resident of Arlington, lived in Roslyn that whole time, currently reside in North Highland Civic Association, the Palisades Park. I have to say, it's really a wonder why the county even engages in public processes like this one. All it seems to do is endorse pre-conceptualized designs by cherry-picking feedback favorable to it and deliberately trying to avoid unfavorable feedback. Did you know that during one of the hearings, a neighbor of mine asked if there could be a Q&amp;A because she wanted to hear what her neighbors thought of the design? And what happened? The county staff shut her down. And the process that has brought us here today isn't much better. I wonder two things: whether the board has read the almost 200 or 150 pages of the 700-page document on this topic, and whether anything that's said today will make an ultimate difference in its decision. We, as the public, are given barely two weeks' notice of the hearing and voluminous published documents. Think that it would have engaged some reflection after the loss it took in court on the missing middle project, but here we are, the county once again trying to ramrod through another project, and it's doing so at the expense of safety. The county loves to advertise that Vision Zero everywhere, and yet it is inexplicably removed pedestrian footbridges on Lynn, Fort Meyer, North Moore, and closed another one, all in Roslyn. The proposed design here removes a completely safe footbridge that spanned a segment of eastbound Langston Boulevard where someone from my neighborhood was killed years ago and another one of my neighbors was grievously injured very recently. She raised concerns about this to county staff, and the county has not adequately responded. When my family and others in North Highlands walk to Roslyn from North Highlands, we only allow our kids to cross the highway on the footbridges for safety, and now the county is taking that option away. There's even a sign at the bottom of the stairs that says, "Cross Langston Boulevard here," and the county is completely eliminating that safe option to cross Langston Boulevard. North Highland Civic Association has written a letter to the project planner expressing this concern and asking that the footbridge to North Moore be preserved. Has the staff read it? Who knows? Has the board read it? Doubtful. It's clear that safety was an afterthought for this entire project. It has come at the expense of aesthetics. Did you know that the designers at one point proposed a sledding hill for the park? That's right, a sledding hill, spanning over an interstate nestled between a highway and bisected by three major roads. And on the point of highways, I don't see anything in the materials about VDOT's views on this. It would seem that owners of Route 29 and I-66 would have some thoughts on tearing up a park over and between their roads. Ultimately, even if the county plans to blow past safety and make Arlington look prettier, it should at least give some thought to what the community needs now and in the future. Right now, the Old Key Bridge, the Holiday Inn, the RCA Building, Air Force Station are subject to proposed redevelopment as residential buildings. Hundreds, if not thousands, of new residents will be moving in right next door to the park in the coming years. So, when it makes sense to take this up when there's a better sense of the needs of the park can be fully understood, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. You might want to stay tuned because we'll have some discussion about some of these issues, I think, and go over the engagement. All right, that's our final speaker?
That's our final speaker.
Okay, good. Mr. Carringtonus, why don't you have a motion, and then we'll have some discussion, if that's okay?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is one of the shortest motions, which is, I move to adopt the Gateway Park Master Plan and Design Guidelines.
Attached to the staff report, you need to add that. Good, 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 good. Thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All right. Mr. Carringtonus, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, and we will have some discussion on that. I actually had the opportunity finally to read through the material thoroughly, and I had a lot of fun doing that. It also, it was a thought-provoking kind of read because it doesn't happen every day to have to envision a park in such a place with so much activity and so much traffic allowance. This is an island park, right? So I was thinking about other parks and how this design that's proposed today in the guidelines, how they represent an evolution in how we design public parks in Arlington. So we, you know, as a community, we are well-versed in doing neighborhood parks, like, for example, Kala Sha or Alkova Heights or Blument or maybe Drew Soon. But as of recently, we have dwelt into a completely new class of parks and design, which I call metropolitan parks. It started, actually, in my neighborhood with a minuscule one of Penrose Square, and then we had Mosaic and Met Park, and now Gateway Park. Neighborhood parks, the parks that we all have been doing until now, until recently, have the function and the character of working as a neighborhood public space. So it's a kind of a third place to rest, to play, especially for kids, to celebrate with friends and family and being community. Neighborhood parks are like a green oasis and moderate recreational activity centers in residential contexts. They are designed to accommodate the use. They are a component of place, but not a place by themselves. Metropolitan parks, and this is what excites me here in Gateway, go well beyond just accommodating the use. They are not designed to be just friendly and welcoming to the visitor and to the user. They are rather designed to define and provide the use context and the active urban use in a far more multifaceted and multi-layered way. They are like multipurpose amenities, and I think that the design of Gateway really accomplished that. The guidelines really guide us to that. So with other words, metropolitan parks and Gateway in particular are places by themselves. They are destinations and locations where urban life and culture emanate from, and they are defined by these parks. So the proposed design is making Gateway a real gateway to Arlington, a central public space and soon Arlington's most recognizable storefront. Because in the last 15 years, what I have at least experienced is that Arlington now has a face in the metropolitan core. It is identifiable. You can see that.
Oops, it's my water.
And now we have a place for people who cross that bridge to go to festivals, to activities, to shops, to restaurants, to hotels, to Roslyn, right? So, and part of that is not only my opinion, but the very fact that almost 60% of the cost of that, so $18.4 million, $18.5 million, are contributions of, in terms of public benefits from developers and people who have a commercial interest there. I should also know, you know, recognize the Roslyn bit who is directly contributing another million dollars to that. That's absolutely awesome. I hope I'm not wrong about that. I believe there is a direct contribution, right? No? Okay.
I'm having to raise the money.
Oh, yeah, which is an enormous effort to do and an unusual one for a business improvement district. So that's, thank you for that. So with other words, Gateway is both main entrance to Arlington, significant landmark, and a cupstone at the same time, so I'm very, very happy to see that realized faster than anticipated, significantly faster, almost a decade faster than anticipated. So this rhymes and sings very nicely with Arlington's newest storefront and facade and also an amazing civic space to celebrate. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Just in time for my last meeting, which is pretty cool. Ms. Coffey, did you want to ask some questions or anything?
Yeah, I can kick us off. I do think, so I attended two feedback sessions in person and have met with neighbors, met with folks from the Mount Vernon Trail, Friends of the Mount Vernon Trail. A lot of engagement on this. I think Roslyn is a very active community and neighborhood, which is a great thing. But one of the things that has come back again and again is the transportation safety issues. I will say that I flagged that, I think, for staff pretty early on, that, you know, we were hearing, I at least was hearing, less about the design of the park and more about the access to the park and whether, you know, no matter how good the park was, if you can't get to it safely, are people even going to go? And so I do believe that we've started doing some work on transportation safety and access in the area. We are not solely in control of those streets, unfortunately, but I don't know if there's anyone from staff on who could speak to some of what has happened or some of what's to come.
Yeah, I'd be happy to pass it to my DES colleagues. Daniel Neighbors, I believe, is on teams.
Mr. Neighbors?
Yes, good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, in response to the question, we have made some improvements in safety, obviously, since we are a Vision Zero city. We are very concerned with safety. Some of the things that we've done is, at the eastbound lanes of Langston Boulevard and Fort Meyer Drive, we had some intersection improvements that we made there, and those intersection improvements allow pedestrians to cross those intersections without any conflicting vehicle movements. So in other words, when pedestrians have a walk, there will not be any crossing vehicle traffic. So that is something that we've done recently. There will be some follow-up capital projects at that intersection that will help improve the ramps and do some other upgrades as well, and that will be coming in the next year or so. And then, of course, at Lynn and eastbound Langston Boulevard, which is also used to access the park, when the construction that is part of that site plan is done, that intersection as well will have protected pedestrian movements, meaning, again, whenever there is a pedestrian crossing, there will be no conflicting traffic movement with the pedestrian crossings. So we're doing that, and on the north side, we're doing similar improvements, and you'll see those unveiled over time. But I think the most significant thing that you will probably notice recently, which we did a couple months, is making that improvement to Fort Meyer and eastbound Langston.
Great, thank you. I will say that I have maybe been a skeptic in terms of how much improvement can happen when you still have large highways around a park. And I actually just happened to be in Chicago this summer for completely unrelated reasons, and walking through Millennium Park, I think, was a real eye-opener to me in terms of how much the design and forestry of a park can really create a buffer from the urban environment. And if you haven't been to Millennium Park, there is a six-lane highway that goes directly in the middle, and when you're in the park, you can't hear it, you can't see it, you feel like you're in a park. And I was a little stunned by that, to be honest. Again, I was quite skeptical that it was possible to create that level of separation. And so I, you know, would like us to give this a chance, and I think it connects to me to the importance of the level of trees and forestry that the park plan has implemented. North Roslyn, we just had a presentation on our tree canopy last month, and North Roslyn is among the lowest tree canopy of any neighborhood in Arlington. I've had many conversations with residents, with the Civic Association, that it's a major concern. They don't have places nearby that they can really go. And so the level of trees in this, I think, is a huge deal because it's going to bring the neighborhood as a whole into a greener space while also kind of providing that opportunity to buffer and to get away and to use it as part of the urban design. I think that is a really, really cool thing. My one other question before I pass along to colleagues, and I believe I know this answer, but we passed our CIP with a certain dollar amount available for this project. Is implementing this master plan within the cost range anticipated in the current CIP?
Eric, would you like to...
So we have done a preliminary cost estimate, and this is within the overall project budget of this. You know, it's an early estimate, and there's a lot of things that can change, and we'll refine that as we go through the design development. But at this point, we're comfortable that it's within our overall project budget from the CIP.
Excellent. I'm very happy to hear that.
Oh, great, yeah. Thanks for sharing your experience in Chicago. I mean, great urban parks are amazing, and it is hard, because it's an experience, it's hard to explain it, you know? You kind of have to go. So I'm glad you shared that. I'll go ahead and ask, you know, we had concern from the speaker about, could you put up the slide again that has the engagement and talk about that a little more? I think you had a slide with the process here, and if you could talk about that a little bit, I think that might be helpful. And then also talk about, which is probably not on the slide, about engagement with VDOT. We certainly have been talking to VDOT. Certainly, our engineers have. Are you able to get that up? Yeah, you're getting there, I think. I see it down there with the...
All right, I appreciate your patience.
Oh, it's all right. It's okay.
So regarding the engagement, we had, like I said, a three-phase engagement that included a couple different elements. The first was a visioning exercise, that very high-level questions.
And that was about 18 months ago, right? Because I think I participated a year.
No, it was only in April.
Was it only April? Gosh, you guys, it's amazing.
Yeah, we've been moving quickly.
Yep.
So, yeah, that was in April. We used the feedback from that first engagement to develop the concepts that we used for the third engagement, which was in June, and then took the feedback from those, and I'll show the preferred amenities on the screen now. We took that feedback in order to refine the concept to the final one. And throughout that engagement, we heard from community members, we heard from stakeholder groups about a lot of different things, but primarily about the issues of pedestrian access. To address the point about the removal of the pedestrian bridge over eastbound Langston Boulevard is that for our projects, we are limited to the kind of the scope of the area that we are working in, and for that, it's the edge of the curb for the existing Gateway Park. The pedestrian bridge over eastbound Langston Boulevard is planned to be removed as part of the site plan to redevelop the site there, and so we are responding to that. But that doesn't mean that we don't agree with a lot of what folks have said about the issues of pedestrian safety. And in order to address that, we've worked closely with our DES colleagues, we've worked with VDOT staff throughout the engagement process, and it helped us kind of come to this conclusion that pedestrian bridges were necessary over certain parts, and in the areas that we could have some control over it, like over North Fort Meyer Drive and over westbound Langston Boulevard, we elected to maintain those pedestrian bridges.
And you had some pushback, I think, on that. There's some groups that really didn't want one of those pedestrian bridges to go away, and you decided that we needed to keep them.
Yeah, and I think a lot of that's rooted in some of the engagement that happened about a decade ago with the Roslyn Sector Plan. I think a lot of people envisioned a future of Roslyn that was a little bit more open, a little less concrete, and to do that, they needed to remove those pedestrian bridges. But that's why we do follow-up engagement on our park master plan projects. Sentiments can change, and it was evident to us that we needed to shift some things in order to meet the needs of the folks who lived in the community.
Thank you. And can you put up the slide? That's the other one with all the little bubbles that mishell for, you know, the slide, because it just has all the dates on it. That was, I think it was 23 is what I saw on the side of the slide deck. It just kind of goes over what we've been doing. I don't know if Mr. Kelly's still on the line, but for people who think we don't...
Oh, this one.
Yeah, that's the one.
Thank you.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So there's a lot that goes on here, and you're right, and it has moved quickly for something like this, but it's still basically a year. And I think, actually, one of the things government needs to do is get a little bit more nimble, and you really have reached out to people quite a bit. Talk a little bit about the commission process, so, because you worked with at least Parks and Recreation Commission, right? And I don't know if any other commissions weighed in or not.
Yeah, so we, throughout the process, we remained in communication with several different commissions. PRC, obviously, we met with the PRC during...
That's Parks and Recreation for Mr. Kelly, who might be still listening, yeah.
Thank you. We attended the October meeting at the Park and Recreation Commission to discuss, I'm sorry, we attended the July meeting at the Park and Recreation Commission to discuss the second engagement. It was while that engagement was still live. And then we also attended the November Park and Recreation Commission to give them an update on the final proposal. Additionally, we presented to the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission at their November meeting, and then we attended by invite the Pedestrian Advisory Committee meeting in October during the final engagement process to get their feedback. And a lot of the discussion that we had there was what led to some of the amendments to the final proposal after that final engagement.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood? I was wondering if I could interject just for a quick moment.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thanks. One thing I want to just kind of also mention, as we're talking about the engagement, is that you had noted it was becoming more nimble, and we've actually compacted a lot in that process since April. And in that, not only is the online engagements that Mr. Wood spoke about, but the in-person engagements, we've also had multiple in-person, attending farmers' markets, different events at Gateway Park where we have gotten out, we've taken comments and talked to folks on, actually in the park, in Roslyn area, as well as notifications. Notifications, we have a government delivery list, and so anybody who signed up could get notifications as soon as something was posted to the website.
So for everybody listening, and Mr. Kelly, perhaps, could you talk about, because I think that pushing out notifications, how people get on that list, because obviously people are interested, could you just talk a little bit more about how they sign up for that?
Yep, certainly. Yep, certainly. As you can go to the county's project webpage or the Department of Parks and Recreation project webpage. And all our projects are listed. Obviously, Gateway Park would be one there. However, at our online engagement, excuse me, in-person engagements, we have a slide. We have information about how to sign up. And you can go in and add your email. And then anytime anything is posted on that website or individual notification would go out through our Gov Delivery messaging system. There are also, we also posted signage in the park and in the area that had information about how to sign up or how to go to the website and look for more information. And we also have done some personal notification to the Civic Association Presidents, which we have received feedback through those channels as well, asking them to please share with their membership this information as well.
Thank you, thank you. So for Mr. Kelly and others, you know, listening, it always seems like people, there's a lot going on. People don't necessarily, you know, see what all is happening. And for that, we're trying really hard. That's why we have, you know, you can sign up and get it pushed out to you. If you want to really be involved, there are commissions that we have. And that's one of the reasons we have commissions, because those folks are paying attention. And we do at least ensure that we get some feedback from people that way. So there are lots of ways we try to get feedback. And I appreciate, Mr. Stewart, you're talking about how it was in that last meeting when you really heard the concerns about pedestrian safety that you did make some changes because of that. And I appreciate that responsiveness. Okay. Ms. Cunningham?
I wanted to probe on two things. One is continuing the conversation about pedestrian access. Was your comment earlier suggesting that regardless of this park project, the current pedestrian overpass at the eastbound side of Langston was slated to be demolished?
That is correct, yes.
And was that widely known in the community already? Or was that buried in another site plan project that may not have been as clear?
It's part of an earlier approved site plan. And, but it's something that we communicated during our online engagements, that we are responding to the environment around us in order to plan for the future of this park.
Okay. So that does sound like a really, really big deal. So I'm thinking about, you know, a 10-year-old, nine-year-old, first independence biker who lives in central Roslin. How do they get across there? Or a seventh grade student from HB Woodlawn? How do they access? And I know we've had some really challenging and tragic pedestrian incidents there already. And no matter what we do, that's a lot of traffic that has to go through there. And it, you know, people don't always follow the rules. So I am concerned about that. And I'm curious, you know, what degrees of freedom, understanding that parks has to kind of design within their frame, this may be a manager and beyond, question, what else can we do? Do we have any degrees of freedom to reconsider preserving some level of pedestrian and bike overpass on eastbound Langston?
So as far as the overpass itself, that is, was part of the, I believe it was a DITMAR site plan that the county board had approved when that came forward. And so they are proceeding with their development. And they are entitled to that approved site plan now at this point. So as far as specifically what county is able to do to preserve an overpass, I think we're going to be limited there. I would double check with the county manager on that, make sure I'm not stating that incorrectly. But we will have it limited because it's been entitled. And so they have the right to go ahead and proceed with that. And it's wrapped up into their development, construction documentation and moving forward there. I think so what our focus has been as far as this park project is to ensure we're working with our colleagues in DES. And they're on the line. They could add any information they may want to or not, to make sure those improvements that Mr. Neighbors spoke to earlier, changing some of the light, the way the lights work there, improving the physical structure of those intersections as well. He talked about some upcoming capital projects to try to ease that transition. One of the things that I will also talk about, which I do know has been a bit of a, there's been some back and forth with the community, but also as part of that site plan approval, there was a former slip lane that is going away. And so one of the things that will play out as people interact with that intersection is that there is almost a narrowing of that street that is happening. Because that slip lane and that service access road will no longer be there. And so now the crossing is only of the eastbound Langston Boulevard lanes themselves. Now, it doesn't negate the amount of traffic going through or the speeds that people are going through. And that is where the improvements, I believe, that DES, working with VDOT and others, are trying to improve through the Vision Zero initiative.
And maybe Mr. Nabors could comment a little bit about what all is planned there? And are we going as far as we possibly can? You know, for instance, like completely closing the intersection for some cycle so that pedestrians can cross in all directions? Or what else can we do? This is a very significant change with very significant impacts if it's not right.
I would ask, I think Mr. Neighbors is probably still on the line to talk about the specific changes that are happening there. He did mention some of the ability for pedestrians to cross without cars interacting in that intersection while they're crossing. But I would like, if he would, be able to go a little bit farther than what I could provide.
Sure, I'm still, yeah, I'm still on the line. I can help answer some of those things. Again, to reiterate, you know, we understand that, you know, the concerns with crossing as a pedestrian or bicyclist. And, you know, we're looking at how to make that, you know, conflict-free with vehicles. And again, some of the changes that we just implemented in the last few months at one of the primary crossing points, that's eastbound Langston and Fort Meyer, we put in phasing so that it's completely separated. It's very similar to what I think has been described in this discussion, is that pedestrians can make that crossing on the east leg or on the west leg without any conflicting traffic. So again, from a signalization standpoint, that's one level. But the capital project will continue to enhance the crossings by reclaiming as much space as we can for pedestrians, for bicyclists, so that there are narrower lanes and there's more space for pedestrians to guide them along these crossings. Similarly, at Nash, there's going to be a signal improvement that will help improve those pedestrian bicycling spaces. And finally, moving to the east, Aunt Lynn and eastbound Langston, there'll be improvements there that, again, just widen the space that pedestrians have to use. And the signalization will prohibit vehicles from crossing pedestrian paths as they are crossing the streets. Does that help explain?
Yeah, and presumably, that includes like no turning as well. So no turn on red.
Includes no turning as well, correct.
Another question we often hear about Roslin is bike traffic lights. Has that been considered here? And can you comment on that?
Sure. That hasn't been considered here yet. But that is something that, so we work under federal guidance for bicycle signals. And within the past year, the manual that we follow, that all agencies follow, we call it the Manual of Uniform Traffic Controlled Devices, just allowed the installation of bicycle signals. So that's something that we need to take a higher, you know, bigger look at and to see where are the locations that we can incorporate something like that. Obviously, that will come with some cost. But that is something that we will look at implementation since it has just recently been approved at the national level.
Great, thank you. So, Mr. Manager, might I ask that we do look at that bike signal question concurrent with the park to see if we might be able to pilot that and get ahead? And then secondly, bigger ask is, could we have a backup plan or an alternative plan of if we find we do need a pedestrian access there? Do we need to acquire land? You know, how would we go back to having an overpass there, say, 10 years from now when we discover we want it back?
We will engage in those scenario planning. And we'll see, you know, we'll get the on-the-ground facts to determine whether we have to go there. And we'll be ready to handle that.
Okay, great. And then my second question, sorry, I took a little longer than I meant to, is on the engagement process. So I think we heard from the public speaker and we heard earlier in our conversation and probably in every conversation we have with the community, that there is a strong interest in having more listening to one another, more neighbor-to-neighbor engagement. And I'm wondering if you can share. I know there's so many different pieces of engagement and most of us don't go to every one of them. Were there some that were more kind of Q&amp;A focused or talk to your neighbor? I know one of the very early ones I went to, there were some conversations. But what's your take on how we approached it so far? And also how we will approach it in the next phases? Because there's still a lot of engagement to come.
Yeah, that's a great question. So for the engagements, they often vary. For the larger kind of in-person public open houses, where the crowds can get kind of large, it can kind of take away from the conversation when there's having kind of too much of just like a back and forth. What we're trying to do is get as much information from folks as efficiently as possible. But that is where some of these other kind of opportunities to engage come in. We had pop-up events at the Roslin Farmers Market, as well as at events at Gateway Park that are a little bit more small-scale, a little bit more intimate, and gave us opportunities to speak one-on-one with folks about what was being proposed, questions they had, concerns they had. And it helped us kind of refine those concepts a lot more during that engagement process. Going forward, we have had some in-depth conversations about what those engagements will look like during the design development phase. But we, since they are going to be more detailed in nature, because we're kind of refining this big concept down to a Gateway Park, I imagine that they will have some opportunities for those as well.
And I would just highlight, I think for many of our residents, time is pretty tight in life. And so they may only make it to one, you know? So if you make it to the big presentation, but you wanted to have a more individual conversation, it can be frustrating. And I know in our own board interactions, we try to have sort of a relief valve for that, where there is a one-to-one or there is a small group pullout that might be available. And I wonder if we could explore that. So for the passionate resident that is only going to make it to one, how do we make sure that they get both the presentation and the engagement with one another? Maybe we need to pilot a couple of things, see how we can do.
Sorry, I was just signaling Max over his shoulder. So I think that there's, I think those are great suggestions. I did also want to try to explain, maybe dive a little bit more in depth of what the in-person engagements were, just because it might help in the conversation a little bit. So at those engagements, they generally started off with a large presentation. And then in the first case, there were stations around the large gymnasium area for residents to go in or participants to go and do activities to give feedback. But we also have at least two staff at each station. The same thing with the second engagement, where we were talking and exploring the concepts. They were broken up into smaller rooms. So it was a large presentation. And then there were staff there. There's staff, like for example, I myself wander around and talk to people. There is lots of in-depth person-to-person engagement, exchanges between neighbors in those small rooms that are very productive. Sometimes get a little heated, but they go back and forth. And there's lots of dialogue there. And so it is a way we try to provide that opportunity. Sometimes when you have a room full of people and people are just raising their hands, it's not really a back and discussion. It is more of a, this is what I want to say, which is great. We try to provide that outlet too, as well. There are ways to put your feedback in as far as commentary. At any point, you can email the project manager, in this case, Max. And we have, we've engaged people outside of those processes via email, smaller follow-up conversations that Max was talking about. Some of our little pop-up events are very intimate sort of conversations with the community. So there's, we really try to move in DPR and across the county to a very robust type of engagement. So there's lots of different touches to find where you're comfortable, varying the times we're out there, Saturday morning and evening. So trying to provide those opportunities for people who, like you said, may have limited time to engage in our processes. We're always willing to find a better way to do it and add new things. But I just wanted to let you know kind of what that felt like at those engagements.
That's great. Thank you so much. And you guys do so much engagement and really bringing our community together in these planning processes, but also in the programs that are delivered under DPR. So thank you very much for your hard work there and look forward to continuing to iterate.
Great. I want to just build on a couple of comments on what you touched on, Ms. Cunningham, because there's a lot. On the pedestrian bridge, I appreciate the manager saying, you know, he could look at, you know, putting it back in. I know sometimes you have bridges and people, particularly American. If you're in Japan, they all take the bridges. But here, they tend to just cut across because it looks easier. So there's that. And sometimes if you assume that people are going to take the bridge, but what you really need to do is make it safer for them to cross on the ground. So that's important. Getting rid of slip lanes is huge. I think slip lanes are so dangerous for pedestrians. It was interesting to me that we, I think I heard you say, we just got approved, that nationally has finally approved to put signals for bicycles. That's fascinating. So if you go to Europe, which I've done with Sister Cities trips, you will find, which I've said before, but maybe not with this particular board, they have two roads. So there is a road for cars and trucks. And then there is a road for wheelchairs and bicycles. And then there's often a pedestrian pass. And the bicycle, and they've had signals for those bicycle roads for years. Obviously, we, you know, it's hard to kind of squeeze it in. But Europe too, it's got to be hard because those are old cities. So it's really, they've really advanced how you have this whole secondary transportation system for, you know, scooters and bikes. And as I say, wheelchairs. In one day in Mastrick, Belgium, I saw more wheelchairs on the street than I've seen, I see in six months here. Because people really, it is designed so people can really get around. So that's a long-term project. But there, if you want some good examples, that's a good place to go. And I think, I think that was it. I do, I do, we did hear the one comment about being upset that at one point, a sledding hill was considered. And I've been on this board a long time. Sledding hills are really important to this community. And if you didn't consider it, you'd get in really big trouble for not considering it. Just want to say that, moving forward, guys, always consider a sledding hill. Might decide it's not good, which we did here. But you probably need to consider it. All right, thank you. Mr. DeFranti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really appreciate the comments that Ms. Coffey and Ms. Cunningham have in response to Mr. Kelly's concerns with respect to pedestrian safety. I do feel that the place to focus now is on what's next. And the questions for Mr. Schwartz, we, you know, there are parks that address safety. I've walked across that walkway once. I was not a seventh grader when I did so. And so I'm very mindful of Mr. Kelly's concerns. I do think that what we do next for our staff and for Mr. Neighbors, as well as DPR, will be key in terms of helping with safety. Most often, I've crossed up at the big, you know, sort of on Slide 3, I think it's the big sort of four white, you know, big crosswalks and not mid-block. And so I think they're fair concerns. I think working forward on them is how I propose that we realistically invest to try to address it.[1658.22] And so that's, that's that. More generally, there's a lot to like about this effort. And so pleased to be considering it. And thanks, Madam Chair.
Sure. All right, colleagues, I think, are we ready to vote? Mr. Carringtonus, no, go ahead.
I have a couple of things. First of all, I have a lot of respect for the comments that we received from Mr. Kelly. And I have to tell you, from the, from the day one, we discussed Gateway as a, you know, proximal planning object. It was not surprising to me that we were talking about the accessibility of the park more than actually the design of the park itself. And I have to tell you that we have a master transportation plan discussion today. These are major arterials there. And I can tell you that we will be, I'm sure that we will be talking a lot about the quality of these intersections. For example, Lynn and Langston, for me, I mean, where is the gateway of the Gateway Park? And for me, there. The different use scenario, like for example, when we have a major festival there, we will need to treat these streets in a different way than in the day-to-day. I have to tell you that I belong to a generation of people who have learned that sometimes disentangling and separating may produce safety for one model, like the pedestrian model, but may, may, you know, misguide us to forget that we have to make the other model, which is the cars far more safe. For me, and I remember when we had the discussion on the Roslyn Plan, as a, as a resident, we were literally asking for the skyways to slowly but steadily to retire. Why? Because we've seen that they were part of a design that actually makes it more car-centered and more dangerous at the end. So the job is now for me to see whether we can really reduce the risk that comes from the aggressive traffic, especially on the up and downstream of Langston and on Lynn. That said, so I look forward to the master transportation plan treatment of all this, because this will now have to take into account a really different asset there, a really different park. I have one question on the asset. Was it at any point a discussion about, I see that we want to have a multi-layered and multipurpose park? What about active pavilions and places where people can, you know, every day have a sandwich or so? So something that is really accompanying the usability of the park? We have seen in Water, the Watergate Park, huge success with that.
Yeah, we weighed a lot of different options throughout the entire process. Whether to have dedicated infrastructure for commercial use on the site was something that we went back and forth on. Ultimately, we decided to go against it. One way that we are addressing those needs, though, is to provide space for, space and infrastructure for food trucks to be able to go onsite by having dedicated space for those food trucks to go, as well as infrastructure for them to plug into or safely use propane tanks or something like that in order to provide the services that they do. Those are things that we're considering. And again, we'll get into a lot more detail during the design development phase.
All right. I think, I think we're probably ready to vote. I just, before we, I'd thank you so much to the staff. It's so cool seeing this move along as quickly as it has. I just, Ms. Coffey, I really love your kind of talking about your experience in Chicago because hopefully somebody's going to talk about that here in Arlington with this park, I think. And the company obviously designed it, also designed the High Line in New York. They're very familiar with landscapes. I've been on part of the High Line and it really, it's, it's an amazing, even though it's not a big, huge park, it's narrow. It just kind of takes you out of the city in a way. It's just, it's lovely. So I don't have to come and do more shoveling of the sand for the next time. That's fine. Y'all have fun with that, but I do plan to come. I don't, and I don't expect to cut the ribbon, but I'm going to really look forward to coming and walking around this park and really experiencing it when it gets, when it gets done. So looking forward to that quite a bit. All right. All in favor of the motion before us, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much. It's just great. And that brings us to our next item. Would you please call that Mr. Cook?
Yes, of course. Item number 26 concerns Chapter 26, an ordinance with an effective date of December 15th, 2024, to amend, reenact, and recodify Chapter 26, Article 3, Section 26-122, which is stormwater utility fee credits, subsection B2, voluntary credits of the Arlington County Code to modify the county's stormwater utility credit program.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, over to you. We had a nice presentation, I think, last, last month when it was advertised and happy to have any more that you would like to have today.
Yes, I think we're going to, just because it was such a good presentation, we're going to give it to you again.
Okay, sure.
I'm going to ask Chris Stabel, who is available online, and she can take control of the slides, and I'm going to hand it over to her.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good morning, Madam Chair and County Board members. My name is Chris Stabel. I'm the fiscal manager for the Stormwater Utility, and I was also the county project co-lead for the utility implementation. In the boardroom, I'm joined by Tyler Smith, the DES Budget and Finance Division Manager, who is also a co-lead for the utility implementation. And virtually, I'm joined by Steve Scouran, our Stormwater Utility Program Manager. As the manager said, I'm going to give a short presentation on the first year of our stormwater credit program in support of the board report. So the county implemented the stormwater utility in calendar year 2024 as the funding mechanism to pay for the county's stormwater management program. Programs now funded based on each property's measured impervious area instead of the assessed value, making it a more equitable way to pay for the program. In Arlington, there was a very weak correlation between assessed value and the impervious area. Impervious area is the industry standard and also best practice for how to equitably allocate costs for stormwater programs. As part of the utility model, we're required by the state to offer a credit program, and those are for what we're calling our mandatory credits. The Stormwater Credit Program was adopted by the board in April 2023 so that property owners would have an opportunity to take those voluntary credit actions to reduce their 2024 bill. It's intended as a small thank you to property owners for taking certain actions that reduces stormwater runoff or is environmentally friendly. When we were setting up the program, we benchmarked against both neighboring jurisdictions as well as nationally. We also worked with our stakeholder advisory group and also faith-based organizations to make sure our credit program was tailored to Arlington. We also scaled credits according to the level of effort or cost. For the types of credits, we offer voluntary and mandatory credits, which we'll go into a bit in the next couple of slides. As we mentioned previously, the state requires us to have a credit program, and that we give mandatory credits for our stormwater facilities installed. And these are LDA permitted properties. We expanded beyond the minimum requirements to also offer a range of voluntary credit options to property owners. So our first year of the program was extremely successful. After many years of planning and working on the implementation, we're pleased to share the results with you again. We had lots of interest and participation in the first year of the program. We gave credits on almost 6,000 properties, equating to about 9% of our total billable properties. So when we had originally surveyed our neighboring jurisdictions, they warned us of extremely low participation in their programs, many giving less than 100 credits per year. So we're incredibly pleased with the volume of the credit applications and the response that we received from the program. So typically jurisdictions budget about 1% of their revenue for credit programs. We budgeted an additional 1% just for our mandatory credits based on the existing volume and anticipated growth of our LDA properties. Our 2% budget is approximately $380,000. For the first year, there was almost $113,000 for both voluntary and mandatory credits. Most of the credits for the average homeowner with a bill of $1 ERU or $258 was either, excuse me, it was either $13 for a 5% credit or $26 for a 10% credit or multiples thereof. Based on the dollar amount of the credit program, we also knew it didn't make sense to have a complex program where the administrative cost would exceed the amount of credits we're awarding. We have very limited resources dedicated to the overall administration of the stormwater utility. We're trying to keep it very lean. We strove to minimize those added costs for shifting to the utility model. Our Stormwater Utility Program Manager is the only staff assigned to the credit program for application review. And this is also factored into our verification requirements. We wanted a good balance between self-certification by property owners and then also burdensome requirements and calculations that we've seen that other jurisdictions require. We saw single-family homes with credits ranging up to 25% or a $64 reduction on their bill. Some of the more popular voluntary credits included rainwater collection and permeable driveways for single-family. In multifamily, we saw properties ranging up to a 20% credit, meaning they're the per-unit charge of $46.33. They received a credit of about a little over $9. This was for both apartments and condos. In the non-residential space, we saw that the faith-based organizations took advantage of the credit program, with some properties receiving up to the maximum of 35% off of their bill. Just the faith-based organizations alone totaled over 10% of the total credit dollars given out. For both multifamily and non-residential, some of the more popular voluntary credits were tree planting and our volunteer events. So we learned a lot through the process, and we want to share the results and the feedback we heard along the way, as well as some proposed updates. So here are some charts and graphs that help illustrate the results of the first year of the credit program. As I mentioned, we had about 9% of our total properties participate in the first year of the program. A little more than half of this was for the mandatory credits. And in the middle, we showed the mandatory credits. Those were those LDA stormwater facilities. The credit program is a nice carrot, which encourages the timely compliance with the maintenance agreements. While we eventually get to 90% compliance, getting the upfront timely compliance really will reduce the workload for both the property owners and the county. Unlike other jurisdictions, we don't make property owners apply separately to get these mandatory credits. As long as they're in compliance with the existing requirements, they'll get that credit automatically. So it saves a lot of paperwork and administrative work for everyone. The far-right map shows the distribution of voluntary credits across the county. We saw that 11 faith-based organizations were able to leverage both the mandatory and the voluntary credit programs to achieve credit reductions on their 2024 bill. You'll also notice that the southwest corner of the county, we had a cluster of multifamily properties that also participated in the credit program. For these customer classes, they were able to bring either their congregations or their residents together to participate in volunteer activities, which produce credits for them. We had heard this feedback from them when we were developing the credit program, so it's great to see that they were able to follow through and they leveraged these credit actions to help the environment and also lower their bills. Strengths that we've seen in the credit program include the variety of options available, ranging from no cost and up. We've streamlined the application process. As I said, for the mandatory credits, there's no separate application process needed. All the property owners have to do is to comply as they normally would with their normal submission of their inspection and maintenance reports. We've also, for the voluntary credits, we've limited the documentation requirements. Receipts, pictures, and a certification statement are typically all that's required. Ongoing credits are, also only require recertification every other year, so that, and they also require a lower level of documentation to recertify than they supplied originally. We've partnered with our county agencies like the Solid Ways Bureau and Parks, as well as community organizations, including Eco Action Arlington, on our credit options, including the tree planting and our volunteer efforts. And then the last two go hand in hand. We focused on customer service since this was a new program, and we knew that providing timely responses to our applicants was critical. Our program manager focused on providing assistance through the email, the phone, and web inquiries. So here are some of the specific feedback we heard and how we've addressed that. The top two rows, concerns about the complexity and the difficulty of the credit application process and a desire for the better, better communication and clarity regarding the program and its requirements. I've combined all the feedback and all of the actions we've taken into the next slide, so I'll review that in a moment. We did hear the desire for mature tree credit to be added. While we had considered this during our implementation phase, we heard concerns about, both from our stakeholders as well as staff, about the heavy administrative burden, because it can be both difficult and time-consuming to verify these applications. Our stakeholders had concerns about equity, and this being, this credit would be more applicable to our higher-income properties. They appreciated the inclusion of the new tree planting credits since applicants would have access to no-cost trees through the county's tree program. Our stakeholders also voiced concerns that the credits for existing trees don't encourage new and sustainable actions. There was a desire for pre-existing conservation landscaping and also native plant garden credits to be added. Again, this credit can have a heavy administrative burden with compliance, and there was concerns with difficult verification process. There's, you know, a lot of ambiguity around appropriately maintained versus neglected landscape. And again, pre-existing credits don't encourage the new sustainable actions. And the last item, the one we received the most feedback on, was regarding the desire for new credit types. Forty-six of the 56 customers requested the expansion of specific credits, including the permeable patios and the underground water management systems. So based on this feedback, we are proposing the expansion of the existing credits for rainwater collection and the permeable driveways. I'll talk about that more in detail in the next two slides. So, but first, I wanted to provide a little bit more detail on the enhanced communication for the program. As you can see, we've listed out here all the many enhancements that we've already implemented to address the customer feedback. We've tried to simplify as much as possible to make the whole program easier to navigate and to apply for credit. Now, we have videos, webpages, and survey tools, which should assist property owners in determining the credits they qualify for and how to apply. We've now made it so you don't need to download the whole credit manual. You're able to navigate on the web to a specific section of the manual and look at it online instead of having to download that. And it'll bring up all the pertinent information for you. So now to talk about the enhanced credit options that we are proposing. Based on the feedback, we wanted to offer up some immediate options that we could implement this year. So we came up with two options to expand credits. Adding new credits tends to be, it will be a more difficult and lengthy process, so we wanted to offer some options now to address the feedback. So the two credit expansions that we're proposing for board consideration are both for single-family residential. We would expand the permeable driveway credit to also include permeable patios and other services such as walkways. This would only apply for lots that have total impervious cover of less than 75th percentile for their zoning category. The second, we would expand the rainwater collection credit to also include redirection to an underground absorption feature, including drywells or French drains. We caveat this, that the redirection should not impact either your neighbors or public sidewalks. If these expansions are adopted by the county board today, then customers with these credit practices could apply for the credits starting on Monday, and those would apply to their 2025 bill. But due to the timing of our review and the required county board approval for these changes, we've delayed the start of the credit application period until Monday, so the board could, had a chance to consider these changes. We wanted to note again that we'll continue to make enhancements on the webpage, the manual, and the handbook as needed, and we'll also continue to review our feedback that comes in. This concludes my presentation, and the team is available to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. All right. I don't know that we have any public speakers.
We do not on this item.
Excuse me?
We do not on this.
Okay, all right, fine, thank you. Ms. Cunningham, do you want to make a motion and we'll get going on it?
Sure. I'd like to move that the county board adopt an ordinance, Attachment A, with an effective date of December 15th, 2024, to amend, reenact, and recodify Chapter 26, Article 3, Section 26-122, Subsection B2 of the Arlington County Code to modify the county's stormwater utility credit program.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. DeFranti, thank you. Ms. Cunningham, would you like to speak to your mouse?
Sure, I'd love to. So first of all, just a huge thank you to our staff who have been working tirelessly on this for, for several years. The first, first year of the program was, was pretty smoothgoing, all things considered for a year-one program. I know you guys personally fielded a number of my own inquiries as a resident before I joined the board, and definitely, you know, helped educate all of us about the credit and also about the impact of stormwater. I especially appreciate the ongoing balance of, you know, burden to those who are applying for the credit and administrative burden and getting to the right answer. So just really applaud you all. And I also applaud you for, in only year two, beginning to expand those credits to respond to significant feedback from the community. And I also want to just reiterate, because we've had this question a lot, that, as you said, it's a small thank you to property owners for making choices going forward to voluntarily support our climate resilience. This is all part of our climate adaptation and resilience efforts across the county, which are crucial. And while government can, should, and will support those efforts, it's absolutely crucial that each of our residents and businesses join us in that journey. And so this is a great first example of that, and I know we will have a lot more of those to come in the new year. I'm especially excited about faith-based and multifamily really engaging here. Sometimes we don't have as much success engaging the full and broad community, and this is really showing that the volunteer path, the tree planting path really were successful, and we will continue to build on that. And then finally, I just want to highlight how crucial this stormwater topic is. Given our intensifying storms as our climate warms, as evidenced most recently by the Hurricane Helene, just intensity of rain in a very short period of time, I am thrilled that we, as a county, are really leaning that we, as a county, are really leaning into this with our risk assessment and management plan, which is one of the finest, I think, in the land. The prioritization of investments on public lands from the great stormwater vault in Westover to buying more public land and making it public for overland relief. And then finally, this stormwater credit and the data that we've collected so far and the careful mapping and analysis has really given us a great data base, you know, a base of data to work from as we finally turn to tackling our low-residential neighborhoods and how we can better build climate resilience, how much lot coverage is too much, how to manage the permeability there, since we can see in the data that the impermeable surfaces have been growing fairly steadily with redevelopment and patios and other things. So really excited about this one, and I hope that we will all support it.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Any other comments or questions? We did have a discussion last time, but we might have a little bit more, Ms. Coffey.
Hard to have more comments when Ms. Cunningham really covered it all, so, no, don't be sorry.
No, that's fine. Mr. Carringtonis?
One residual minor, while I'm aligning fully with Ms. Cunningham's comments. I still remember when we started this discussion about having a stormwater utility, et cetera, and we already predicted that, you know, implementation will take and we will polish, et cetera, and this is actually what's happening here. My question is about the two-year, on the application process, the recertification every two years, whether this is a little bit too often or too much, or is that the best practice? Or, you know, could we live with, do we have insights that could suggest that we could do that a little bit less frequently? So that's my discussion.
I'll try to answer that, and if any of my colleagues online want to add to, they can. I think we don't know yet because we haven't done the two-year cycle. We certainly have a lens and are trying to be as low burden as we can to residents, and I think the recertification is less onerous than your initial application, but we do want to confirm that those things that you, for ongoing credits, that those things that you applied for initially, that they're still on your property or that you're maintaining them. So that's certainly something we can look at and see if we can expand it and see how that, when we do come up on that first two-year cycle, what are the problems we see, what's the feedback, and see if we need to adjust.
Thank you. The purpose of my question is literally to reduce the administrative burden, A, and B, you know, having to recertify every two years, the same thing, to some people may appear a little bit more onerous than otherwise. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. DiFranti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really appreciate the work, you know, July of 2019 is etched in my mind, so the ongoing important work is there, and all it would take is one storm of that scale that impacts Arlington for us to be back in the middle of this, of the public engagement. So that's why the ongoing work, when it's not visible to, not quite as visible, is so important. Thanks to Mr. Carringtonis for the question. We certify our driveway, and I don't think there's a conflict, because there's many people who have this. We certified our driveway every two years. I can be open to three years, but I am really happy to comply and make sure that the leaves are not in the wrong place, take the pictures, do all that for the driveway every two years if that's what we need. But thanks to Ms. Cunningham for summarizing it well, and really to staff for the great work.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for all of the great work. You know, after the horrible storms in North Carolina, I was reading, reading something about, it was a real estate investor, and talking about the problems for insurance around the, and how expensive places. And what he says, he's got a company, and they're looking at where to sort of invest. And right now, everybody seems to be moving to Arizona and Florida, looking at climate change. He says, "That's not a good idea at all." And what he's looking for is communities around the country, wherever they are, they're actually tackling climate change and becoming more climate resilient. And I read that, I said, "Oh, Arlington, we're doing it, we're doing it, here it is." And I think over time, it will make a big, big difference, and I'm really delighted we're doing it. Also, I'm going to be doing, as you probably know, some work on a house after this year is up, and I'm planning to kind of maybe try to go for this resiliency and see what I can do. So if I have any problems with the process, I'm going to let you know. So thank you so much. All right, all in favor of the motion before us, please say aye.
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 All right, motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much. Mr. Kushner, could you please call the next item?
Yes, of course. Item number 27 is adoption of the 2025 State General Assembly package after the county board's annual hearing and legislative works session on the proposed general assembly session principles and priorities.
Mr. Manager.
We were not planning a presentation because we made one at last month's meeting, and we're available for any questions you might have about the package.
That's absolutely fine, and we had a public hearing at our last meeting, so this is a time for the board to finalize the package if there's anything that we need to, colleagues want to change, and I will entertain comments or suggestions from anybody if they have them, but there's been a lot of work done already. Anyone want, Mr. Carringtonis, I see you flipping pages. Did you have something you wanted to add? No?
Actually, I haven't.
That's fine.
We had also a lengthy and, I think, substantial work session with our delegation. I think we are
Ready to go.
Very ready to go ahead.
I think so, too. Ms. Cunningham has taken a break because she thought she had a few minutes to take a break. Ms. Coffey, okay, we'll wait and stall a little bit. Go ahead, Ms. Coffey.
I'm happy to offer a motion, and then we can kind of discuss
Let's go for it.
A little bit, yeah. So I would move to finalize and adopt the 2025 General Assembly legislative priorities as attached to the staff report and the agenda.
Thank you. And it's been seconded by Mr. DiFranti. Do you want to speak to your motion and give Ms. Cunningham time to get back?
No, I'm happy to. This is the first legislative package that myself and Ms. Cunningham have been a part of. I think it's coming at quite an interesting time politically in terms of the General Assembly. There's, it's going to be a short session, there's a limit on bills, there is an outgoing governor, there is elections coming up, there's just a lot happening. And so I'm really grateful for the time that we had with our General Assembly delegation, though not everyone could come, and their willingness to fight on a number of the priorities we have, especially when it comes to housing and cost of living and human services. I think we have such a strong set of representatives for us down in Richmond. I've spent some of this week on the phone with staff and others from their offices, and I know that they are gearing up and they are ready to represent us well, and I think that makes me feel good going into what can be a really stressful time. And so I, you know, this is a strong document. I'm not sure how much progress we're going to make, unfortunately, this year, but I think it sets us up well to continue to advocate for the things that matter most to our community.
Yeah, thank you. As someone who's been around a long time, rarely does it kind of go the first year, but over time, you do make, you do make progress. And I will say that I think this, I think Virginia has the shortest, maybe Texas, or somewhere another state that's about as short. It's such a short session. It's almost ridiculously short. It's great to have the package together and have our, you know, be aligned with our legislators as we are. It will just be a crazy fast ride, I think, this year going through things. Any other comments that people would like to make? We have a motion, it's been seconded. Mr. Carringtonis?
Just shortly, I was particularly thankful to our new colleagues on the board that they resurfaced and elevated, you know, really issues of protections in housing. Ms. Coffey in particular, also on the 60 days that we, I think it's now literally ripe for a serious consideration. It takes, it takes many cycles, and, Madam Chair, you're right, it never happens at the first
Every now and then it does, but don't count on it.
I also think that jurisdictions like ours and tidying that, building a bridge to the previous item, elevating the issues of environmental protections and, you know, things that we need to remind the General Assembly that there is a huge constituency in the state, in the Commonwealth, I should say, for these, bringing that, putting them on paper, even if it's three bullet points. This is extremely important because people see them and have to position themselves to them, and that's, and it's part, important part of progress that needs to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we're ready to vote. All in favor of the motion before us, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Coffey, and all my colleagues for all of the hard work. Really appreciate it. And it's going to be an exciting year with the General Assembly, I'm sure. Thank you, Ms. Flanagan-Watson. All right, and I think that gets us to our next and maybe our final item. Mr. Kushner.
Item number 28 is the adoption of proposed amendments to Chapter 14.3 concerning the immobilization, removal, towing, and storage of vehicles from private property of the Arlington County Code.
Thank you. Over to you, Mr. Manager.
I guess I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Miller, who will lead us through the towing labyrinth.
Dr. Miller.
The formal, no, I just prefer, I just prefer not to use it. Good morning, members of the board and chair. I am honored to be here before you today again regarding changes to Chapter 14.3 of the Arlington County Code regarding towing and the storage of motor vehicles, as I was with you last month in November, and we asked for a deferral so that we could iron out a few things and review some of the constituent comments with you all. So I've got before you today something a little somewhat familiar with a few added changes, which is the presentation going over the timeline of towing changes. I'll briefly go through that and then leave it with you all for any questions. So as I noted last month, starting in January of this year, the Trespass Towing Advisory Board unanimously recommended a desire for Arlington to implement a permitting system for our towing within the county. In July of this year, the state code was updated to allow Arlington to do just that, to implement a permitting system, among several other changes. The Trespass Towing and Advisory Board, and I saw our chair here earlier, reviewed and provided input and recommendations to the county ordinance, and by October, we had issued the request to advertise the proposed ordinance changes, received public feedback, and then came to you in November with the changes as proposed by staff. There were a few legislative updates which allowed this, everything from a $20 fuel surcharge that is required in state code to the ability to implement the so-called second signature requirement. As I noted during last month, we received a number of points of feedback during the RTA period to include strong opposition to the proposed second signature implementation from property managers, business representatives, and the towing community, and neutral supportive of permitting, mostly supportive of clear guidelines and well-defined processes and procedures. I shared with you all the results of a survey that we conducted during the request to advertise period from late October to early November. We had over 500 participants from the community, and our goal really was to better understand the resident experience and views on towing and to provide those important qualitative inputs to the decision-making process. So I'm back before you today with a summary of the recommended changes. First and foremost, staff recommends that we increase the maximum-based towing fee from $135 to $150. This is consistent with fee increases as allowed in state code and also is in alignment with the Trespass Towing Advisory Board recommendation. This does put us in general alignment with the other communities within Northern Virginia, including Fairfax. We also advise and recommend increasing the drop fee from $10 to $20. Again, this is in alignment with a recommendation from the Trespass Towing Advisory Board. There is a fuel surcharge of $20 with each tow that is mandated in state code, and that is effective with an expiration date of July of 2025. And so our proposed language does include that fuel surcharge fee. We also have a few other process changes, the implementation of the permitting system, some clarification on contact information, and other state code changes to include 48-hour notice for multifamily properties, more clear signage, and clarifying that towers must retain evidence substantiating receipt, and in those cases, a third-party mobile parking permit payment records. And so our staff recommendation is to adopt the proposed amendments to the county's Trespass Towing Ordinance with an effective date of March 1 of 2025. Why the delay in implementation? Because over the last month, we have discussed with constituents and with the staff that we want to make sure that we, one, onboard a new position efficiently, effectively, and provide them opportunity to get trained up and introduced to the community and to members of the Trespass Towing Advisory Board and our towers, and that we can implement the appropriate technologies and processes and procedures to support transparent permitting and processing of the systems. And I'm here to answer any questions and continue on.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Now, I think we maybe have, do we have our commissions, the TTab going to present?
We do. I believe Mr. Kennedy is in the room with us.
Come on up. Good morning. It's still morning.
Yes.
You can raise the podium if you want to. I don't know if that, there's a button on the
I'm all right. I appreciate it. And I have no clock, right? I can talk as long as I want.
We ask you not.
Okay.
The chair has a big mallet.
Okay. All right. Well, I just wanted to share a few thoughts. First, to the chair, I've observed you kind of different issues over the last decade, and I know this is your last meeting, I just want to say. I've admired the way you've just led the county, and I wish you the best in your next endeavor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So I've been the chair of the TTab since the beginning of the year. I know what you all are going to be voting on. I'm not sure if there's still a chance for amendments.
There is.
Okay, because I'm going to, I actually addressed a letter to you all earlier this week, and just some issues that I've observed, that I've kind of taken in over the past year that I think are still important and worth considering. So the first regards the second signature, and I know that's probably the hottest issue on the table. I believe it was a board member, Coffey, you had kind of said, commented on that at the last meeting that, and the way I took your comment was, there's really not a lot of data that talks to whether there will be violence, and that was one of the arguments about, against the second signature, because now you bring the property owner out there, and the property owner is now put on the spot, and in a tense situation with the tow, there could be violence. That was one of the strong arguments that I know was presented. An argument, another argument around second signature is, okay, we have a contract with this property owner, that why do we have to bring the property owner back into the picture, you know, to sign off on the tow? On the other hand, and I know Delegate Lopez was strong on this, what about the Uber Eats delivery person who just shows up real quick and all this, you know, that might be where we need a second signature, just to slow down the process. So what I think would be a really effective compromise around that would be a 10-minute waiting period. I think a 10-minute waiting period, you don't need to have the second signature participate in this, but I do know that there is a practice, a snatch, a snatch and grab, I've heard that terminology, and I've seen these guys work, because I saw them take my car, and they can hook a car up in no time and get it, probably less than 60 seconds. And if they're, you know, if a tow operator is looking to, I'll use the term spy, because there has been that accusation, if there's a spy lurking, says, "Hey, tow truck, come on, get this car, it's illegal," that car can literally be gone in 60 seconds. on, get this car, it's illegal, that car can literally be gone in 60 seconds. So I, second signature was supposed to defend against that, but I'm actually in agreement that the second signature is kind of a, just, hey, if I was, I don't want the, I know it's only from nine to five, but I just think bringing the owner of that property out, or even an agent to that property, just seems kind of not the spirit of the contract. But I do think a 10-minute waiting period would be really effective. And I actually gave you an example of what it would look like. I don't want to take all your time now, but that's something that I would say, let's consider that. Number two, the immobilizer or the boot. I'm not quite sure why, the T-Tab had actually proposed that the fee which had been set at $10 be increased. We said 95. I've heard 75. I think that's the sweet spot, somewhere in that 75 to 95 range. But that's actually not a change that's been made in the proposed revision you're looking at. And I can't quite get my head around why no one's been, the boot, and this is why I kind of addressed my letter, both as the Chair of the T-Tab and just as a private citizen, I want the boot. I don't want to be towed. I think the boot, less wear and tear on my car, and if we tie the, you know, tow operator has to respond within 30 minutes or something like that to the boot, I'd much rather have the boot, have the tow operator come out in less than 30 minutes or less, remove the boot, and then I have my car. And some of the tow operators would prefer using the boot. But a $10 or a $20 fee on the boot, the tow operators aren't going to do it. There's just no incentive for them to do a boot for $10 or $20. I just think the boot fee, and I feel like I could be arguing against the consumer protection, but I actually think I'm arguing in favor of a consumer protection, I would prefer the boot. Now, the tow operator might still decide to tow my car, but at least there's some, there are some tow operators who would prefer to use the boot. Number three, the permitting system. I'm actually going to, and I will say my experience working with the tow operators has been surprisingly pleasant. I've really gotten to know some of these guys, men and women who are in this business, and they're, you know what, they're good folk. And you know what, they're just trying to do a business, run a business that needs to operate in the county, that no one likes them, probably less popular than the IRS, but we need them in the county. And I know we're raising their tow fee from $135 to $150. This whole new permitting system, which I totally support, I think it has teeth, and I think it's going to encourage good behavior. But the one thing in the permitting, the permitting system that I actually heard these guys, and I agree with them, is turning over contracts, a blanket requirement to provide contracts to the county manager. And that, to me, is a big administrative burden. So I think a simple amendment would be upon request. It shouldn't be blanket, I have to turn over all these contracts, but, but it's upon request, if it's requested, then they must be turned over. So it's really at the discretion of the county manager to say, this operator, I have, you know, I have some concerns about, I want to see your contracts, fine. But just to blanket every tow operator turning over contracts just seems like a real heavy administrative burden that, in my view, has no value. Finally, number four, the appeal process. The T-Tab had a recommendation that was not carried forward to the version you're looking at. We said, we recommended, under the appeal process, the T-Tab will review the appeal and make a recommendation to the county board within seven to 10 days of receiving the appeal. That's going to create a lot of goodwill between the county and the tow operators, because what it's, all it's going to do, it's not that the T-Tab is making a decision whether a permit revocation is appropriate or not, it's just giving another set of eyes to that action. And because you have a tow operator, the police, and a citizen rep on the T-Tab, and our, the three of us, the current members, have worked really well together, and we can just come together and say, hey, is that revocation, or that denial, or that suspension, is it reasonable? And I think, you know, if it's been done in a reasonable way, we're probably going to say yes. But there is this suspicion, there is this suspicion, and I'm not calling out, I don't think there's any foundation for it, but maybe someone has an axe to grind with a tow operator. So there's going to be arbitrary revocations of a permit. And that just gives a little bit of protection and creates a lot of trust with the tow operators. Those are my four suggestions. I appreciate you all, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but otherwise I encourage you to look them over and consider them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Take a seat, but stay close, because we might have some questions for you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Speakers, I think we have one speaker, Mr. Kushner.
We do. Just a moment, please.
Okay. I'm making a wild guess, it's Mr. Musso here.
Indeed. Our first public speaker is Mr. John Musso, followed by John O'Neill.
Okay.
Good morning, members of the county board. John Musso, Government Affairs Manager at the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. I just want to say a few brief words. First of all, we greatly appreciate that the proposed tolling ordinance brought before does not include language regarding the second signature requirement. We greatly appreciate that the county board had heard our operational safety concerns that were, that we presented to the chamber and also other member businesses and property owners throughout Arlington also raised, in addition to T-Tab, as mentioned before. With that, we ask that you please adopt the ordinance as proposed. Additionally, we understand that in the coming weeks and months, in the implementation process, there will be a need, as Mr. Kennedy noted, ensure trust between the tolling operators, the property owners and businesses, and also the county, to make sure that this is a straightforward transition into the new year. And we are ready and willing to work with the county and convene dialogues, if necessary, among stakeholders, to make sure that this is a straightforward transition. So thank you very much for your time, and we do urge you to adopt the resolution, the ordinance, rather, as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Musso. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is John O'Neill, followed by Wendy Thomas.
Is Mr. O'Neill here?
Mr. O'Neill.
Perhaps not.
Our next speaker, then, is Wendy Thomas, followed by Hannah Weatherwax.
Good morning. I unexpectedly am here this morning to testify. I wasn't expecting to do this right before Christmas. But happy holidays to you all, and good luck in your future endeavors. I, too, have seen you at other public meetings, and you are a gracious leader.
Oh, thank you.
So I would encourage you to give an inflation cost break to residents of Arlington County and keep the towing fee, it is exactly where it is. I think it's a pretty substantial amount for most people who get towed. I'm here to speak with you today based on, unfortunately, some personal experience. When I was parked, we were moving to the area, and we were parked in my daughter's apartment complex, and my car got towed in the middle of the night, and we had a visitor's pass, and the tow company, I think, the pass had fallen, but because it was the middle of the night, and they were trolling for cars to tow, they just towed the car. So word to the wise for the tow companies, don't ever tow a car that belongs to a city planner, because the first thing I did was pulled up the Arlington County Code. And then I called the police department and said, did they report this tow? You know, you can't get a response from the police department, and I understand it's not a high priority. But then when I got to the tow lot, which of course is going to be very far away, it's going to be very difficult for people to get to, we were able to get there because we had another car. But, and then I said, did you report this to the cops? Were you, were you trolling for cars? I had a visitor pass that the management company gave me, and then, right, thank God, they called the management company. The management company said, yes, she did have a pass, please just let her car go. But I had an old car, and so I said to my husband, there's no possible way someone stole my vehicle in the middle of the night. But of course, that was my first thought. With regard to the towing of expired vehicles, just as an interested party, we are a former military family, and I think, and I know in my daughter's complex, a lot of active-duty military live there. If the car is parked there and it's expired because somebody is deployed, right, the registration or the inspection, then that should be verified. And I do believe that that's worth a second look, because maybe someone in the ownership will know that someone is deployed and can't get to their car, but they believe it's parked safely on private property where they are still continuing to pay their lease payment. I would really encourage the signage, because there was no signage where I was, and I only was able to find where my car was, because the management office at that time was open, but the management office in these residential complexes is not always open.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
That was all I had to offer you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Hannah Weatherwax.
Hi. I'm coming in over Teams. So I'd also like to speak against this proposal to increase towing fees. In the county code, it says these codes were put into place to protect citizens from predatory towing practices by these Arlington County towing companies. By increasing the fees that these companies are allowed to charge, all we are doing is increasing the monetary incentive for them to continue these predatory practices. So I also live in an apartment complex where specifically one company is always trolling late at night and is regularly targeted by them. I've been lucky enough that I'm also a nerd who reads county code, to be around and have gotten five different cars released that were starting to be illegally towed. When, right, their owner came out, right, there should be at max currently that $10 drop fee, every single time the towing operator has said, no, I don't need to let your car down, it's up, I'm taking it, you get to pay a $400 fee at the lot. So I appreciate the intent to train these people about what the law is, but the truth is, is I would expect that they know it currently, and they're just not following it either way. The worst example of this was when I watched a tow truck operator bring two 16-year-old girls to tears because he was fully, effectively straining them, despite the fact that they weren't illegally parked, they had the permitting, their car was just being stolen. And, right, he was refusing to put it down until I showed up and started showing county codes to these people. So by raising the fees that these towing companies are allowed to charge, we are only rewarding this predatory behavior. There are currently already no ramifications for these companies that are practicing predatory behavior, and I'd like to really emphasize that we should not be rewarding them by increasing their monetary incentives to keep effectively stealing cars without cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherwax. Is that our final speaker?
There are no further speakers unless Mr. John O'Neill is with us, but I do not see him.
I do not see him. Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. Why don't we go ahead and get a motion on the table? There's a lot to talk about here, and I think we have some amendments prepared. But, Mr. DeFranti, I know you've been working a lot on this issue. Thank you so much. Do you want to go ahead and make a motion, and we'll discuss it and maybe make some amendments to your motion? Does that sound okay?
That sounds great.
Great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we should have discussion, there's a piece, there's some detail to this motion that I want to make sure colleagues engage on and ask, and we fully discuss. I move that the board adopt the proposed amendments to the county's trespass towing ordinance, Chapter 14.3 of the Arlington County Code, as set forth in Attachment A of the Board Report dated December 6, 2024, with the ordinance becoming effective March 1st, 2025, and with a report from the county manager on implementation of this towing ordinance on or before the board's regular December 2025 meeting.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I can second for the purpose of discussion.
Discussion? No, as I say, I think we're going to have motions. It seemed with a lot of amendments, it might be easier to have one motion and start amending.
Correct. I second for--
All right. Thank you. So the motion has been made and seconded, and then we will have discussion, and as I say, expect some amendments. Mr. DeFranti, do you want to start speaking to your motion, and maybe you want to ask some questions as well?
Sure. So we have been engaged with this. I have a few thoughts on Mr. Kennedy's, appreciate Mr. Kennedy's leadership and letter. But broadly, we have been seeking the ability for local permitting authority, and I'm grateful for, Mr. Miller, I didn't know Dr. Miller, but we'll go ahead and add that.
He blushes every time you do it. It's okay.
But we've been seeking the ability for local permitting authority to prevent unfair toes, and we had two speakers who spoke to that. We have been trying to, this has been an issue that has been discussed quite a bit in Richmond, in the legislature, as well as locally. I really appreciate, we have had time to look at the survey over the past month, which I think is very important. We have engaged in several meetings over the past year, as described in the staff report. I guess I'll speak briefly to second signature. For me, the staff's recommendation not to include it at this time is, seems the right approach, because implementing this will be key. And so we do not have the staff person hired yet. I think it's wise to work with our police department, who will be part of this implementation, to get the staff person on board, and that's why March 1st is the right time for effectiveness. But I will say that the survey, as well as discussion three or four years ago when this came up, puts me in the posture of wanting to consider this quickly over the coming year, and that's why, if you listen to my motion, I mentioned within, by December of 2025, coming back to this, I have zero illusions that I will need to be constructive and working with the T-Tab over the coming year. This is a process of implementation, and so, and that will include Dr. Miller, Mr. Miller, as well as ACPD and the new staff person. So I think there's a desire reflected in the two speakers who came today to set this up and do this immediately, but I, and I'm eager to do that, too, but I think this is actually going to be a process of setting up a permitting system and setting up oversight to prevent unfair toes. And there are different stories, everyone has personal experiences, but my own is over 20 years ago in the city of San Francisco, and I will never forget that I felt powerless as to where the, my car might be. And, you know, there is, that is a relevant question. So I think that I'll stop there and leave it to colleagues to surface questions. I do think it's appropriate to surface, at least eventually I can go through Mr. Kennedy's letter, but I kind of like to break up the talk so I don't drone on ad nauseam. So I'll yield, and when the time is right, I can offer thoughts on your four or five suggestions.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we will have some questions and discussion, and then maybe come up with some amendments. and then maybe come up with some amendments. Ms. Coffey.
In terms of order of operations, is it all right if I do some speaking and then we can move on?
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. I thought, because I think there's some things we all kind of want to work out before we decide where we are.
Yeah. I thought I at least would start off with, I read about 250 comments that were provided in the feedback forum. Read every single one of them on this one. Want to highlight some of the trends or themes that came out of it. One of which is safety, dangerous driving in terms of speeding, not completely secured cars, ignoring stop signs. One particular intersection that actually came out in multiple comments as where neighbors who live by that intersection are quite concerned. Predatory practices, just the word predatory came up more times than I would have expected. The number of people who indicated that toes of their own cars had happened in mere minutes from the time of parking. 68% of respondents who had already been towed in the last three years indicated they were not treated with respect. That is more than 2/3 of the people. And I understand it is an antagonistic situation. But there are things we can control, and one of them is talking to and treating people with respect. And then I thought I would just read some of the comments that I highlighted. "Just after I pulled partway into a legal parking spot to drop off my husband and was backing out, a tow truck blocked me in and tried to tow my car with me in it." From the president of the Ashton Heights Civic Association, "We have huge problems in the Clarendon and Ashton Heights area of cars being towed from restaurant parking lots while people are having their meal inside the restaurant." Let's see, another one. "My car got towed during an open house visit to one of the condos I was looking to purchase. I parked in the building guest parking but needed a guest permit to be visible. By the time I went into the condo to ask the agent for a permit, which I got right away, and came back to put it in my car, the car was already gone. This happened in a less than three-minute timeframe." Let's see, I think I have one more that I wanted to share. "I have witnessed on numerous occasions tow truck drivers speeding out of lots with partially secured vehicles, causing near collisions with pedestrians and other safety hazards. If a vehicle was parked long enough to cause a nuisance to the property, taking the time to fully secure the vehicle and safely exit the lot wouldn't be a problem." So I think this gives some flavor to the types of things that people in our community are experiencing and are concerned about. I think having a permitting system for the first time is going to be a really good thing. My understanding is that part of what we will collect for every tow is documentation that an actual violation has occurred. But I am curious if we can answer whether traffic safety violations are something we would be able to take into account in the permitting process? If there have been citations, moving violations, parking violations, or other things? Is that something that we can assess in terms of a company's compliance?
There are five or six points within the proposed ordinance for considerations for permitting. Those include no brainers, compliance with federal and state safety standards on the tow truck. An example of those safety standards is a requirement that vehicles be secured before they are moved. So that would be an example. We do also have written in there broader category that says complaints generated, that that is one of the considerations that will be made when looking at a permit. And so what you're describing would be those kinds of things that fall into those categories that would be considered.
Great. And will the documentation that we collect on each tow be able to verify something like the car being fully secured?
We do have, within our documentation, there's sort of a towing checklist, right, that people are supposed to follow. And so that is a part of that. In addition to proof of the tow, for whatever reason. So they have to retain, for example, photographs, right? Some companies take more photographs than others, but we do require some proof in the form of the photographs, the lack of a permit to show it parked illegally, that sort of thing. And retaining those records is going to be part of this.
Thank you. I'll pass along for now.
Okay. Thank you. I'll just follow up a little bit. Mr. Miller, the, so we've got this checklist, and we're going to start documenting. Do we have any enforcement? So for example, some of the stories we've heard basically sound like people's vehicles really were indeed stolen. Do they have any recourse to sue or have some support? Suing gets really expensive for the individual. But something to make it painful for the towing. I'm worried that, you know, they do all of this, and people say, you're wrong. Oh, yeah, well, our bad. But they don't change because it's not painful for them to continue to be sort of flagrant about what they're doing. I also am thinking, listening to all of this, they're different towing companies. And we do need towing, and it's really important. I think I saw an hour now about one of our fire stations, fire trucks was blocked by them. You want to be able to tow that. But then there are these really bad actors. Can we find a way to treat them differently to start pressuring the bad actors to straighten out?
Yes, that's a great question, Madam Chair. There's two things that I want to point out. One is that our permitting process, the way that it works is, for consideration of revocation, you know, should we get the types of complaints that you're talking about? We do have the ability to revoke that permit, and then a company will not be able to operate within Arlington County for a set amount of time. They're able to appeal that. Obviously, there's a due process to that system. And so that is a very big incentive because two weeks, three weeks.
Have we ever done that, by the way?
Or weeks, we have not, we have not ever done that. We haven't had the authority to do that.
Oh, and now we do.
And now we do.
I missed that. Important point. Important point.
And the second thing I want to point out is.
I wish, Mr. O'Neil, we're here to hear that.
But I want to point out that one of the other pieces of legislation that was passed last session, and we, some folks may have heard about this, but with our system and with this new individual coming on board, the Attorney General has the ability to implement fines and fees in excess of 10 times the amount of a tow. And that those fines and fees assessed will be refunded to the owner of the vehicle in the event that a tow was found to have happened or occurred illegally or not in accordance with state or local code. That process has not been laid out fully by the Attorney General's office. But we have before referred cases to the Attorney General's office for investigation. And obviously, as we implement the system and bring our staff on board, go through our permitting, we'll be working closely with the police department, with the county attorney's office, and with those representatives at the state level to ensure that all of our constituents understand what their rights are and that all of our towers understand what their rights and obligations are.
Excellent. Thank you. And I think I saw Delegate Lopez enter the room there. Yeah, thank you, because you put a lot in there that's enabling this conversation and enabling us to actually start to do some things. So thank you. Other questions? I'll go down to Ms. Cunningham and work my way back, if that's all right.
I just have a quick question about crash and incident data. So I think there were, in the comments on the survey, a number of near misses at least observed, and maybe some, you know, bigger than that. Do we have the ability, or do we have any notion of how often tow vehicles are involved in pedestrian or motor vehicle incidents?
I could pull that data for you, but the most of what we have is anecdotal, right? It's reports from, for instance, from these surveys or from our civic associations or from business owners.
Great. And I think we'll head towards some reporting back as we move through this. But that would be great to have that in our next time.
Mr. DeFranti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll have a, I want to signal to Mr. Miller a question that I just came up because of Ms. Thomas's comments. And I read back through the ordinance with scanning, and I'm going to telegraph the question and then see if you could give you some time to just think it through. It's regarding the 48 hours. It's, there's expired, you know, the staff report says expired. And then I was looking through the text of the ordinance. You know, it says expired registration or inspection sticker. If you don't have one, there's also a comment in the surveys, which, this is one Ms. Coffey, where I also eventually read every blessed one, that's where it is alleged that a tower says, if it's not up on the dash, they don't look, you know? And so if there is nothing there under the new law, do they have to, does towers have to tag it? And then?
Right.
And then you can't tow, at least, I'm not clear. Can you or can you not tow if you're in Ms. Thomas's situation? You're visiting your daughter?
Right. Great question. And I think, if Delegate Lopez can correct me, it was Delegate Shin, I think, that may have proposed this one? And that Delegate Lopez helped us pass. "Towing for an expired registration sticker, no registration sticker from a multifamily property requires a towing operator to place a written notice on the vehicle at least 48 hours prior to removal." So that is included within our package of changes. And the goal, again, there is to, one, that is a requirement for us. But two, is to reinforce what has happened in that instance, that individuals are noticed, they get that opportunity to, oh, wait, I've just moved in. I haven't gotten my keys or my sticker yet. Get it affixed to the vehicle and have that chance to do it.
Great. I think I knew that once, but I really wanted to get clear because aligning the staff report and the other item. I guess I'll take, just briefly, and try and address Mr. Kennedy's letter and comments. Really appreciate it. I can take some ownership that continuing to engage with you over the last 30 days, you know, I have not done as much as I might like. But I, that doesn't mean earlier and now I'm not listening. And then you're, maybe you might not love the glory, but the next months of the T tab, I'm going to want to engage with you further as we approach December of next year, which is in the motion. But the 10-minute waiting period is a suggestion that I want to work on and think through. It's not one, I think that I would need to engage with Mr. Miller and our county attorney's office to just understand that. I really appreciate the thoughts, thought that is here. I just candidly, we have, as we've said, we got to hire the person. So we got implementation, a lot of implementation before March 1 that we're still working on. So that's my thought on that.
Fine. How are you?
Somebody is online, and you are not muted.
We're muted.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, that's not your fault.
The $75 is something that we've talked with staff, county manager staff, county attorney's office staff. We don't believe that, at least, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam County Attorney, Ms. Corb. But I don't think we believe we have that authority. There may be a different view from other jurisdictions, but that's our place, where we have landed. So the head nod we got there, upon request, is, I guess I would say, we are holding on second signature. So I have more urgency about the contracts. And I was in those meetings with the towers and listened to those concerns. So that's why I'm on hold on that. But we will learn how administratively this works. And then on the appeal, I think, to spoke a little bit to this last month, but the thought is that, that there is a, I have confidence in our ability to work on this. And if this becomes a problem, it's certainly something that I'm happy to work on next year. So just hope that's at least some thoughts to really reflect listening. That doesn't mean we ended up agreeing with everything that you mentioned this time, but are listening and considering your suggestions and appreciate them.
Thank you. Mr. Carrington, I'm going to pass it over to you, but a quick question for Mr. or Dr. Miller. What about the instance? And I've had this sometimes happen too, where you have to get a parking pass, and you come and you go into an office and you come back. And I've sometimes thought, oh, am I going to be safe? And it seems like you're not. What can we do about that? I mean, it's kind of ridiculous, right?
So this is, this is one of the reasons that staff had recommended being able to get copies of contracts, right? Is we want to understand how that's written in and what the obligations are of the towers and what those processes are so that, one, we can be good consumer advocates, should that happen? And, two, understand, you know, even from the tower's perspective, hey, I was just doing what's asked of me within my scope of agreement with a business owner. And obviously, because we do, as you mentioned, we want to be fair to those. And so that is, that is a part of that, and that is a part of what.
So if it's not in the contract, you might go back and say, hey. You need to.
Yeah. Right. This probably wasn't, wasn't what we would can say, you know, to be a good tow. And, you know, maybe an instance where we say, hey, that's a, that's a strike. You know, we want to, we need you to pay attention to that.
Okay. Thank you. I would imagine some businesses, if they're trying to get business, and everybody who comes to give them business gets towed, they will not get business, I think. All right. Mr. Carrington.
A perfect segue, actually, because I have been involved with this question, actually, living in a neighborhood with, that had two current and former hotspots of towing, actually predatory towing. And I will say a couple of things about the experience of that far longer than the survey, than the survey comments. Number one, these contracts, I was executive director of the Columbia Pike Realization Organization back then. So I would go door to door because it was a real problem that people didn't go to certain businesses because the, you know, towing was such a prevalent thing. Everybody knew that in Westmont Mall, you would be towed in a matter of 10 to 15 minutes. Because there was somebody who was looking all the time, and there was a fleet of tow trucks that was permanently, as some people put it, on the pro. Which makes actually predatory towing has two effects. Number one, it makes the cost of towing as a business far higher because you have to have the readiness of the fleet to jump in.
And the spotter.
And the spotter and all this. And the second thing that makes it, it reduces the, actually, the incentive to provide customer service and to be a friendly company. And this is why we see a marketplace where, as Garvey said, we have different companies. Yes, we do, but one of them is like 67% of the market. And the next one is about 30% of the market. So basically, it's a two, two companies market. And predatory towing actually helps this to even be more concentrated because it's just the type of, the business that can take this kind of cost if it's concentrated and can run a lot of operations. So my question is, over the years, we have seen, you know, formal complaints increasing. So '21, it was '29. '22, it was 45. '23 is 58, and so forth. So is that not, what drives that exactly? What are the reasons that we see more complaints? And I have to recognize that it takes, I mean, there is a threshold to get to, to complain, to actually complain about that.
I think one thing has been ease of access. We've expanded the ability for our constituents to reach us and make complaints. Two, it's been attention to these issues. This has been, as was noted earlier, a topic of concern even up to the state level. And so our representatives in Richmond, you know, heard from constituents and taken this down. And so I think that that's the other thing. I think, you know, as well, coming out of the pandemic, we've had people out and about more. And we've seen more development, and we've seen more of a little bit of a conflict between, in some of our more popular areas of explosive business growth. And then I think a little bit of that has been, as you mentioned, competition for business. But our promise with the system too is to be able to better track complaints and make it easier. So right now, one of the things we've already implemented, you can go online to find if your vehicle's been towed. You can put in your license plate. Well, you know, part of the permitting management system, we've already implemented a module of that to make it easier for our members in our community to be able to find out if their car has been towed. So that's been a big step. The next step in implementing that is, hey, we're going to be able to take text and phone call complaints, right? You can call it now and email. And we're hoping to identify a partner to be able to take a complaint 24 hours a day. Because we know that a lot of these events, as have been mentioned, may happen overnight. We're a 24-hour community. And so we're going to be able to do that. So I think, you know, part of this is a reporting bias, right? You're seeing more ways in which we are paying attention to this, able to hear from our constituents on these issues. And, you know, I expect that more constituents are going to be sharing their concerns with us as we implement these new programs and refine them.
Fine. And thank you for the response here. What I see is that there is a. What I what I see is that there is a a parallel evolution here. We have almost 20,000 tow's every year, we have an increased, an increasing number of complaints, formal complaints, we have an ever-increasing number of informal complaints, we have kind of opaqueness in how these contracts are, you know, structured, and I can tell you that, because when I went from door to door to small businesses and restaurant owners, et cetera, sometimes I was, I would find that they had contracts, they didn't even know that they have a contract, that's number one, number two, the contracts were kind of blank, blanked, there were no, you know, quality.
Maybe the towing companies wrote the contracts.
Exactly, this was like a blank check contract, and very often, the the business owners themselves didn't know how to manage that so that they could have a a control on that. So this is one of the many reasons that I think that the second signature, once we figure out the technical issues of that, because there are some, I agree, that this would be a, so there's some sort of consent to to tow, would be important to to have. The second thing that I feel a little bit hesitant about, I'm I'm currently not very motivated to to agree to the increase of the towing fee from $135 to $150, and and it's precisely because I'm very hesitant to reward nonresponsiveness to, or non-improvement on customer service. I would, I understand that there is a cost of running a business, and that we are living in times where this cost may increase. On the other side, I know that certain practices, especially predatory towing, actually increases the cost of business in, you know, in comparison to the actual public service that it provides, or at least this is my hypothesis. So what what is the justification for for going to this this extra $15?
Currently, the state code allows localities in Northern Virginia, there is a range, 135 to 150, that we're allowed to charge. Hearing from T-Tab, the recommendation that was provided up and that staff considered were two things, one is the increase in costs associated with not only labor, but also with, you know, the implementation of some of these portions of the ordinance that we're putting in, and and two, just the general costs of business overall, as inflation has risen, you know, this would, this would help them be responsive, and they also cited, towers cited at T-Tab, the timeframe at which it has been set at 135, that it has been a number of years since the rate had been reconsidered. I think, can't correct me on that one, I've got it in my notes, but it's been, it's been quite a while, I think it's been at least.
More than five or six years.
It's been more than five or six years, yeah.
Could I ask, what is the, what is charged in our neighboring jurisdictions, Alexandria, Fairfax, Falls Church?
They vary, and they vary because in some cases, I'll use Fairfax as an example, because the county attorney and I had talked about this, Fairfax has taken the the stance that they can and do have the ability to charge more for an immobilization fee, and so their immobilization fee is higher and their towing rate is is comparable to ours, I think they're at 150 as well, and so that would, you know, we would, we would be in line with that. But they are, again, very large and have a very spread out, spread out set of densities. Alexandria is at 135 still, I think, they're 135 still, I think, yeah, and, yeah, that's where.
All right, thank you. And we are having other fees, there was a fuel surcharge fee, and there's some other fees that have have increased, actually, the the effective rate of of the towing fee. Could I, one more question, because we haven't talked about this yet, but Mr. Kennedy brought up the issue of the boot and the immobilizer, and I remember we had a discussion, I'd like to, which made sense to me, if you'd like to, why we're why we're not increasing that, what what sort of that the effect cars immobilized immobilized along our streets might do.
Right, well, two things, one is, and I'll again defer to the county attorney on the legality of it, but two, precious parking spots already exist within particularly our dense urban corridors, and the immobilization, someone may decide just to stay there, pay the immobilization fee the next morning, right, I've already been charged, it is what it is, I'll just go ahead and take the rest of the day for free parking, and then, you know, that that sort of does not help us clear the parking spot, and so, you know, if the goal really is, as business owners say, to keep parking available for our business.
It's not helpful, yeah, no, thank you. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Ms. Corb, no, okay, thank you. Let's see, looking down the issues, I think we've, and the contracts, all of this discussion on the contracts, for me, by the way, Mr. Kennedy, I saw you thought it felt was an administrative burden, actually, I'm pretty convinced we need to see those contracts, because I think there's an issue, perhaps in the future, we decide that you don't need to see them so much, once we get things straightened out, but there seems to be a lot of work to do. Going back to Ms. Cunningham, and I'll come back then to Mr. DeFranti.
I just had a quick question for our attorney, the, there's been the suggestion of considering a wait period, like a five or 10-minute wait period, do we have the legislative authority to do that, or do we know?
I can't answer right now, I'd have to look into it.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, Mr. DeFranti.
And it would be very difficult to enforce and measure it.
But you can totally see, I like more the idea that there's a contract and it's clear that you, anyway, but yes, Mr. DeFranti.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I will just be brief, I mean, I do think that, to Mr. Carrington's points regarding the fees, I'm, we've had two folks come in and mention this, I am mindful of, you know, Arlington is in is a more compact county than Fairfax as far as fees, I would just surface that Mr. Lopez and and our other delegates, this is an important issue that is is in Richmond, and so those tectonics, I think, are also relevant as we, as we think about the decision. I have had a chance to touch base briefly with one of our state senators, and, you know, I think that there's, will be some activity, the legislature is very different, is significantly different than it was two or three years ago on towing issues, so I just wanted to surface that for colleagues and yield to, I'd see Ms. Coffee as well as you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I think I'm almost ready for motions, but I had one more question for Mr. for Mr. Miller, and that was what Mr. Kennedy brought up about the appeal process.
Yes.
Could you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. The proposal that had been made in the Trespass Towing Advisory Board was that on revocation of a permit, the that the appeal, the way the ordinance has written the appeal, comes before the county board as a measure of due process, and the T-Tab had recommended that that appeal come through them for review and to provide a recommendation on it before it goes to the board. Upon considering that, when staff looked at that and consulted with the county attorney again, and we looked at the state code, T-Tab's charge, the Trespass Towing Advisory Board has laid out in state ordinance, is to advise the board on proposed changes to the trespass towing ordinances of a locality, and it's fairly, fairly concise, fairly defined, and fairly well boxed in, and so the the opinion that that we had was that that was not within scope of authority, and so we were, we were concerned that should that be challenged, that it would then invalidate that process. I did want to correct myself, Alexandria is 135, the reason that I questioned is because in mid-November, a package was presented to the Alexandria City Council, similar to this one, to change their towing rates and make some adjustments, and I could not find the result of that right off my bat, because they they met just a few, just like a week and a half or two weeks ago on that, so.
Thank you, and I read what it was, and I can't remember. Ms. Coffee.
Yeah, so Alexandria took it up, but did not change their fee, good to know.
Yep.
Are we ready?
We are ready, I think, I think we're ready, yes, and I will just say, right now, we have, we have a couple amendments I think we're going to make, I'm feeling favorable to both of them, just sort of saying right now, after this discussion, which has been very helpful. Ms. Coffee.
Yeah, okay, I would like to make an amendment to Mr. DeFranti's motion, I move that the board adopt Mr. DeFranti's motion with the following additional change to the ordinance, removal of section 14.3-9.b.6 regarding the fuel surcharge fee.
Thank you, let's get a second.
Second.
Okay, would you like to speak to your motion and explain it a little bit?
I would, I think one of the things that was very clear to us in the survey feedback, as well as just from data, is that gas is at one of its lowest prices that it's ever been, I think there's no need for this to live in our ordinance, I understand that state code, section 46.2-1233.1, section subsection C, just to read verbatim, says, notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter, no local governing body shall limit or prohibit the fee authorized pursuant to this subsection. It's not clear to me that it being removed from our ordinance can do anything to preempt the state code, but I don't see why it should be part of our ordinance when we did not authorize or pass it.
Thank you, and a quick question for our attorney, if I might, and so my understanding, this might sunset, and if it sunsets and we don't have it in there, then we don't have to do anything, correct?
That's correct, if we don't have this fee provision in there, we don't have to change our ordinance, because it will automatically, whatever the state does will automatically take effect.
Thank you, thank you, all right, thank you. So that motion for this amendment has been moved and seconded, shall we just say, all in favor of the, Ms. Cunningham, would you like to? Nope, nope, okay, all in favor of the amendment by Ms. Coffee to remove that section regarding the fuel surcharge fee, please say aye.
Aye.
Wait, 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 sorry, too fast.
As a point of order, does Mr. DeFranti have to accept the amendment?
No, he doesn't, because we're going to vote, and we're just going to tell him, but I think he's going to accept it fine, all right?
I'm for it.
All right, exactly, thank you, yeah, there's the friendly amendment thing, but we're not doing that, we're just going to vote, all in favor of Ms. Coffee's amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion, okay, that, so that has now amended Mr. DeFranti's motion, and now I will go to Mr. DeFranti for a further amendment of his motion. I, no, we won't, excuse me.
So the.
Carrington.
Yes, I have a an amendment to.
Oh, you do, too?
As a motion, I have one.
Okay, because I was prepared for, you're gonna, okay, thank you, sorry, we had a little mix-up on who was offering which, go right ahead, Mr. Carrington.
The amendment is, I move that the county board keep the fee referenced in 14.3-9b1 at $135, and I argued, I don't know if there's a second.
Second.
Second, and I argued before that, at this point, I'm not, I, we really need to see the improvement in the the customer service, the approach to the business, the transparency on the contracting, the transparency of the business practices, it really is down to basically two companies, and I think this is completely feasible, and also a serious approach to actually rationalize and reduce the cost, because, you know, as I said before, I think that predatory towing is a complicated operation that increases the cost, and so the first place to reduce the cost is to avoid practices that damage customer trust, so that's the reason.
Good, thank you. All right, so that has been moved and seconded, yes, and Ms. Cunningham, did you want to say something? Are we all, okay, I think we're ready, I am in favor of, I've done listening to this, keeping it at 135 for now. Yes, Mr. DeFranti.
I'll wait until after this.
Okay, we can have concluding comments, that's absolutely fine. All right, all in favor of the amendment before us by Mr. Carrington, keeping the fee at 135, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, okay, so we're going to keep the fee at 135. Now we're down to the main motion, and I'll turn it to the maker of the main motion, Mr. DeFranti, you had something you wanted to add here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, so first, I want to try to be as true as I can to the to the T-Tab meetings, there, there is, there's, the survey seems specific enough, Ms. Coffee, that I agreed with the comments, but I think we should acknowledge that there, not every tow is, as we said, not every tow is unfair, and there is a interest in our businesses doing well, and the the word predatory is a debated word, and I felt that my tow in San Francisco was predatory, but another way of saying it, I felt that it was, it wasn't fair in that it was like, two minutes, I got to the place and bam, you know, and that that doesn't seem to serve the public interest, but it is private property, and so I just wanted to say that in the spirit of trying to work towards a temperature component. I did, I do have, I'm mindful of appropriate, I do have a specific question for, I'm mindful that Delegate Lopez, you've worked super hard, but I have a specific question for you, if you'd be willing to share, which is, just, can you speak to the, I mean, part of this is, there's been a lot of debate in Richmond, and I would imagine you're going to continue to watch this issue carefully and advocate on this issue over the next session, I'm just mindful there's, what, 140 members of the legislature, and we can't speak for what all will do, but I wondered if you could just speak briefly to, you know, you care a ton about this, and this will continue to be a priority to make sure we have the authority to to act local discretion.
Thank you, and what's your question for, you just would, I came to prognosticate a little bit about.
Yeah, for Delegate Lopez, and I'm mindful, you know, thank you for your work.
We shouldn't time each other, but I'm going to do us three minutes.
Understood. First off, thank you very much for doing what you're doing today, I really appreciate the amendments, and also I appreciate the fact that you're working on this regulation. I can't, if I had a crystal ball, I'd be a billionaire several times over, but I know that there's at least one piece of legislation that's going to try, on the Senate side, that's going to try to move a lot of the the fee issues to the State Corporation Commission. Now, I don't believe that legislation will actually have a lot of support, in fact, there was a companion bill in the House that has, that was proposed, that has since, just in the last couple of weeks, the Patriot decided not to move that bill forward, the argument being that we should allow the legislation that we put into code last session to bear fruit, to grow, to see how it works, before we start tinkering with it again. And so if you want me to prognosticate, I would say that I think we're going to try to let this new new reg, this new part of the state code, work, see how it works here, finally have some proper regs, finally get away from the legalized, ostensibly legalized predatory towing practices in Planning District 8, and and so, yeah, once again, I have to really thank you, Madam Chair, and every member of this county board for doing what you're doing on this issue, because, you know, this is the one issue that brings Republicans and Democrats together, it seems, in Arlington, because of what was allowed to be put into the state code over a period of more than a decade, and now we're slowly moving it back to where it should be, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your work that you've done to give us the ability to do what we're doing today, because I think we're starting to clean up, getting going on cleaning up a big mess, Mr., okay, everybody's got their lights on, let me go to Ms. Coffee, Ms. Cunningham, Mr. DeFranti, all right?
Yeah, thank you, just some concluding remarks, I think this has been quite the interesting process over the last several months, because we've never had the legal authority to do this, and so we don't hire staff members to be experts in things that we can't do, and so we haven't had expert staff in-house, we're working on hiring one, we're going to bring them in, we're going to create brand-new systems, kind of out of whole clock here, which is an interesting opportunity, but also presents challenges, and I think, you know, one of the open questions that remains, for me at least, going forward, is with respect to second signature, I think that the goal isn't inherently to require a second signature, the goal is to make sure the cars that are being towed are cars that should be towed, that people have sufficient time to recognize a mistake, perhaps, if they get out and think that they're in an okay spot but aren't, or to get a parking pass from a building that they are planning to patronize, and so I think getting the contracts, getting more information about how this permitting system is set up and is effective is a really important first step, it's also critical to get that staff member in place to help us understand how to implement the things that we want to implement, because the goal here is safety, legal toes, enforcement of private property rights, all at the same time, and so we want to create a system that works with that. A 10-minute waiting period is an interesting suggestion. I think that kind of gets to some of what second signature is attempting to accomplish. I'm not sure we have the legal cause of action to implement it, but interesting to explore. Second signature may be the only way we can find to kind of slow down and give people the opportunity to correct mistakes. And so for that reason, I'm glad Mr. DeFranti's motion has us coming back to this at the end of next year. I, you know, again, it remains an open question to me, I think, how we implement that last phase there to make sure that we aren't having improperly towed cars that, you know, if people just had another couple of minutes, could be rectified. And so at this point, I am not going to put the second signature back in, but I think that we should all just continue to keep it in our minds. And again, to remember that the goal isn't to have a second signature, the goal is to have safe and legal toes.
Excellent. Well put. And towing companies are going to be on notice that that's what we want to do, and we're going to try to find a way it has to happen if they're not complying voluntarily. Mr. Karantonis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I, I align with the, everything that was said so far. I think that we have been, we are now in a position to really focus on the kind of service that we want to be available to everybody, to small businesses, to, and, and in a, in a way that it has the customer and consumer protections that, that are absolutely appropriate here. We have seen an industry going in a place where it shouldn't be. I think there were many opportunities to, to correct, and there's still one. I am looking forward on, on the conversation next, this, this coming months, on how to get effective consent and coordination with the beneficiaries of the towing service in order to avoid, A, mistakes, and in order to actually signal to the general public that it is just, you know, that they will be treated fairly, that they are not, that they don't have to have the stress of having to calibrate whether, am I, am I here in a hotspot, and I'm going to be towed here, better not go here, and go somewhere else, et cetera. So fairness, like in everything, is really at the center of this, of this conversation, and also sound business practices. We need to, to hear from an industry that is now highly concentrated in Arlington, how they see their, their business model going into the future, and what kind of safeguards and guardrails they want to build in so that they provide fair and accountable service to, to the general public. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Karantonis. Ms. Cunningham.
Also concluding remarks, I just want to give a huge thank you to Representative Lopez and his colleagues, Representative McClure and Shin, for grappling with this issue and enabling us to begin to try at the local level to get a better solution with a, with a permitting system. And I particularly appreciate our staff's leadership and, and thought in stepping into this with a collaborative intent and with thinking about what's, what can we try first without doing everything and see if that's enough. I think that really is supportive of much of the other conversation earlier in the day that we had from public speakers about building trust and collaboration and community, as well as kind of iterating new programs, as we did in our Stormwater Credit item just a bit earlier. I just want to say, I know we have a few folks from the industry here and probably listening later or now. I was privileged to grow up with an uncle who ran a towing business and, and a cousin who took over it. And so I have some pretty fond memories of, of tow trucks. Myself also grew up in the middle of nowhere, so many fond memories of being rescued by, by tow trucks. So likewise, early in Arlington, experiencing the trying to find your car after, after losing track of it. So I think that we will get through this. I'm really excited that we're going to come back the end of next year to look at whether this set of additional, initial plans works well, what we broke, what doesn't work well, and refine it. And I think that will be some combination of looking again at fees, looking at, you know, is a wait period or second signature needed, or the contract's enough, and then the question of boot fee that's come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeFranti.
Thank you. I want to particularly thank you, Mr. Lopez, for sharing the State Corporation Commission process, as well as also bearing with me, as I wasn't in touch in the last week and, and meant to be. And so, but your leadership on this, very grateful for as well. I want to say, I feel that we have listened to the comments today, in the survey, and last month. And I feel that the conclusion of 135, I know that some of the industry is not going to be pleased with me on that. I can accept that. The second signature was a huge source of concern from the chamber and from others. And I do, when we do policy, I want to be able to implement it, and we are not in a place to implement it. And so I really appreciate Ms. Coffee focusing on the outcome that we want. We want to protect private property. We want to make sure that there's fairness and safety. And so I just conclude with appreciation, if she's still listening, virtually, from Ms. Weatherwax, for also sharing the concerns. And it's lucky that we have had two testifiers who both like to read county code, which is not every resident of ours, but.
It's a lot of them, though. This is Arlington.
That's, that's Arlington. You knock on a door, and it's a deputy assistant secretary or whatever. But I will, I will say, you know, eager to continue the work over the coming months with staff, with the T-Tab, with our towers. And it, you know, it's not going to be perfect from anyone's standpoint, but we do need to focus on safety, fairness, and reasonable and appropriate, important protections for our retail businesses. Thanks.
Thank you. So I won't talk too long, but I am struck by, we're going to, this is all about government working well, I think. I don't know, I don't know if anybody was here with us at the beginning of the meeting, and a lot of distrust and concern about government, but we've had something going on with towing that's really upset people, because there's been things that haven't been right, and they come and they talk to us. And then we go and talk to our delegates. And they go down in Richmond and work magic down there, giving us more power. That's always hard in a Dillon role state. Thank you. And then it comes back to us to try to enact it, here, your local government, trying to enact it. And that is just great. I'm realizing towing is a tool. It can be used for good, or it can be used for ill. Thank you, Ms. Coffee, for really making it really simple to make sure it's used for good, make sure that the cars are being towed, should be towed. Period. I love it. Very simple. I want to thank Mr. Kennedy, shout-out to you and the commission, lots of hard work, really appreciate it. And the members of your commission, thank them, because that's part of all, giving us advice, what, what should happen. We did a survey, we've got input, and now we're going to try and make it work better. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for all of the things that you've done to try and make that happen. I, I am confident it's going to, I think it's going to get better. And again, it's clear, we just, we've got to have towing. Again, I, I was so struck, the article, you know, a fire truck blocked by somebody, or if you've been in your own driveway and you can't get out. All of those things drive you crazy, but I've also had a car taken away because I missed a sign that I didn't see. And then I was rescued by a tow truck once. I did, you reminded me of a fun story with a family. My husband, my two little daughters, and the tow, all in a tow truck together. It was really exciting. Anyway, thank you all very much. We're going to see where we get, I presume this is going to pass. All in favor of the motion before us, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes 5-0. And as far as I'm concerned, this government is best. Thank you all very much. And that brings us, anything more to come before the board for today?
No further.
No? Okay. Just a reminder to everybody who's here, and you've seen this pretty bunting, that's all getting ready for swearing in, more about good government. This afternoon at 4:00, Board Member-elect Julius D. J.D. Spain, Sr., and he's going to be sworn in to become the next county board member here on the board as I take off. And if you want to come here at 4:00, please do join us. And I think that's it for our meeting, and we are in recess until Tuesday, December 17th, at 3:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.